Good evening. I will call this meeting to order. If you will kindly rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, would you kindly call the roll?
Allison. Carmandy.
Here.
Fishbein.
Here.
Laffin.
Here.
Regan.
Here.
Reynolds.
Here.
Tada.
Here.
Testa.
Here.
Marone.
Here. All members accounted in voting. Moving on to a brief presentation regarding Red Ribbon Week campaign from the Coalition for Better Wallingford. Good evening. If you could introduce yourselves to the record.
Diane Mark, Coalition for Better Wallingford.
Nicolaina Cotto, Youth Sector Rep for the Coalition for Better Wallingford.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Nicolaina Cotto, the Youth Sector Representative for the Coalition for Better Wallingford, and I'm excited to tell you about our upcoming Red Ribbon Week events. So what exactly is Red Ribbon Week? It's the most significant and oldest drug prevention awareness campaign in the nation, celebrated every year in the United States from October 23rd to the 31st. The main goal is to encourage a drug-free lifestyle and to spread the word about the harmful effects of substance abuse, including alcohol, tobacco, and other drugs. This mission is at the heart of why the Coalition exists. Our community is gearing up for an amazing Red Ribbon Week, and the Coalition, along with several local organizations, is thrilled to host a variety of fun events from October 23rd to the 31st. We invite everyone, students, parents, educators, and local leaders, to join us in taking a visible stand for a healthy, drug-free life. We and other organizations such as Wallingford Health Department, the Wallingford Police Department, SCOW, and YSS, and more, have organized plenty of engaging activities for all ages to help raise awareness while honoring the legacy of the DEA agent Enrique "Kiki" Camarena, the inspiration behind this movement. We have a whole calendar of events planned, and while I can't list them all right now, I want to highlight two events. The first is the DEA Take Back on October 25th from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Wallingford Police Department. Please bring all your unwanted medication to dispose of them safely. Tell your relatives and neighbors. Secondly, our grand finale is on October 30th at the Wallingford Senior Center from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. We'll have student and other guest speakers, wonderful art displays from Wallingford Elementary, Middle, and High School, students, and some additional presentations along with light refreshments. It will be an excellent opportunity to come together, so please bring your friends and family. I genuinely hope to see you all there. For a copy of the calendar, please visit the Coalition's website or stop by and see us. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and very nice job, Nicolaina. All right, thank you for that. Moving on to item three, the Consent Agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve or accept consent agenda items A through Q.
Second. Motion made in second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Mr. Chairman, I'll be abstaining from 3F and 3N.
Okay. Did you get that, Kristen? Thank you very much. And one thing I'd like to bring up out of the consent agenda is the renaming of Community Lake after Timothy Keough. Tim was a dedicated volunteer to the youth of Wallingford Little League during his five years as president and many more years on the Little League Board of Directors and as a coach. His main priority has always been to provide the youth of Wallingford the best Little League baseball experience as possible. Tim was truly an ambassador to the sport and will always be recognized as a person who helped promote the growth and stability of Little League in Wallingford. And that is from Parks and Rec Director Kenny Michaels. So congratulations to Mr. Keough and his family. All right. Item four, the items removed from the consent agenda. Moving on to item five, public question and answer. Sir?
I think Joe, you called on me.
I did, yes. Yes, please.
Thank you, Chairman Marone. Larry Morganstein, South Main Street. I wanted to come up tonight because I was glad to see the progress, the groundbreaking at Community Pool. I've been a longtime supporter. It's been a long time coming. The reason I came up here tonight, though, is that I also wanted to point out that so many people over these long years getting there should be acknowledged, and I wanted to take a moment or two to acknowledge some of those people, and I hope that they'll be acknowledged going forward in the future. The REC department was then led by John Golick. He played a major part at the beginning, fostering this and getting it together. Also, the members of the Pool Committee, who was led by, I believe, Dave Gallow, Mike Savinelli, and Jason Michael. And if I've forgotten anybody, please forgive me, but those folks played a major role, and I hope that when we get to a grand opening, that those folks will be invited and will be there, and their contribution will be acknowledged. The other folks that I'd like to mention tonight briefly are, I know that there's former councilors that were up there that were major supporters. Chris Chortel was certainly a big supporter of Community Pool, and I hope he will be there. My wife Gina Morganstein was a big supporter. Also, Jason Zandry deserves that also. So I just wanted to take a moment, and I'm sure there's others, so I hope that when that time comes, all those folks will be acknowledged, invited, and given the credit that they so richly deserve. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kellack?
My name is Larry Kellack, and I live at 19 Stetson Street in Yalesville Section of Wallingford. And I just want to acknowledge also a few people on your board here that actually have gotten back to me on these issues. So Ms. Allison, thank you very much for getting back to me. You said the agenda would be under the old. I guess it was too soon to get there because I know there's state statutes on what you can add at a certain time for a town council because I dealt with the Willimantic Town Council for years. Tada? Ms.? Thank you again for getting back to me. I really appreciate it. Mr. Laffin, again, thank you. Although I didn't understand your email, I will talk to you after the meeting. But I just wanted to point out, I went to the State DOT today, and they will not acknowledge that I even contacted them or the town contacted them. So I don't know if anybody on the board or the mayor's office is aware of that, but anyways, what I did over the weekend, listen to a show on WTIC. It's a show about lawyer, and they were talking about liabilities and what it would take and why, I forget the actual terminology they used, but it had to do with property liability. And what the attorney, I paid the $35 to get him to consult, and what the attorney pointed out to me is I need to let the board know that there's certain statutes that they're required to know. So I'm just gonna, and that statute for the state is Connecticut General Statute 13 Alpha Dash 144. And for the municipal liability, it's Connecticut General Statute 13 Alpha Dash 149. And I will give this to the board afterwards. Basically, it says the town can be held liable for known hazards if the individual is injured due to town failure to exercise reasonable duty care to maintain safe public property. To establish liability, a person must prove that a dangerous condition existed. I brought that up to you. The town knew or should have known about it, which I won't go there. The town failed to take reasonable action to fix or warn of the hazard, and this negligence can cause injuries. And one of those, and it says the municipal may be held liable for a wide range of dangerous or unsafe road conditions, including, and the one I want to put, defective traffic control devices. Now, that's under the general statutes. And it says, list, and again, I'm going to give you this so you can file it and do whatever you want with it. But basically, it's defective highway, actual construction knowledge, fair to repair in a reasonable time, sole proximate cause, proper and timely notice. And under the proper and timely, it's within one year of the injury. You have to file a notice. So why am I bringing this up again? Well, today I got brushed. Walked my little pup along Parker Farm Road, crossing from the gas station to the, what you would consider the south side of Parker Farm Road. A young lady came around the corner. She said she did not see me and brushed me with her mirror. If my pup would have been on the other side of me, the dog would be dead today. And there would be some serious consequences. Trust me on this one. That's my baby. And don't get me wrong on that. I'm not threatening anybody. That's kind of a promise. But I'm letting you know, according to what the lawyers suggested to me, that there's a general statute and there is a timeframe on this. It's not a timeframe that they list under the statute, which is one year or two years, depending on the municipality or the state, to file a claim if I got injured. This is letting you know that a hazardous condition exists and what you're going to do about it. Now, what bothered me most about the state was they didn't acknowledge that I even talked to them before, and I've made three phone calls. I personally went up there. And thank you very much. I ran out of time.
Thank you. And so, you know, when you spoke at the last meeting, I had spoken to the police chief afterwards about it, and he acknowledged that we have some issues with some other places in town with a similar issue. So the town certainly acknowledges that this is a hazard and this is a problem. It's a state road, and so the state sets the timing on the light sequences. So he had spoken to the state about it, and they were supposed to take some kind of action. But I'll be happy to follow up on it and report back to you.
Can I answer to that? Do you know what it takes to actually do any changes to that?
I don't.
Little tiny handheld device. Because what controls those lights is called a PLC.
A PLC, I'm electrical. A PLC is a programmable logic card. So you plug into this device, which is normally handheld, and you just type in the changes. That's what it takes. Just to let you know.
Well, thank you very much. I did not know that. Mr. Commerford?
Thank you very much. Bill Commerford, Broadview Drive. That was quick. Thank you very much. Through the chair to the mayor. Mayor, on your servoni for mayor, there was a, I don't want a press release, but it says Vinnie Servoni, Mayor of the Town of Wallingford. Says during the September 9th Town Council meeting, this response. Did you write this?
Well, hang on. So, but the councilmen had said that in order to, any questions asked at the mic have to be germane to town business, right? So the issue that was asked at the last meeting was really a personal matter about the mayor. And so now you're asking me about his campaign page, which is sort of like campaigning.
No, this is signed, Mayor of Town of Wallingford.
I understand, but he has, you know, the mayor has a personal life and a public life, right? So he has the ability to call himself mayor out in public, but that doesn't mean that every action he takes is germane to the business of the town.
Well, this is part of the business of the town because he signed it, Mayor of Town of Wallingford, not just Vinnie Servoni.
Right, but that's his title, right?
I'm asking it because it says that he still stands by that. I just want to know if he wrote this, yes or no.
So this is a town council meeting, right? And we're going to talk about town business at the town council meeting according to our rules. So, but you're welcome to take it up with them after the meeting or, you know, at a different time.
Okay. By the way, the reason Joe probably has no idea why I gave him the flowers.
I do not.
It's just over our one-year anniversary, Joe. You asked me to give you a list of some, several questions for the Center Street Cemetery. It's been over a year. How many answers have you got so far?
I haven't got any answers.
Zero answers. Imagine that? One whole year, you submitted them, we have zero answers. But we almost fund them 100%. And your response was that you would like to some of the answers too. Mayor, I saw that you had the groundbreaking at the pool. When is that targeted to open up?
Our latest estimate is the spring of '27.
Okay, so nothing for next year that you know. Okay. And a survey was done for the buildings. Do we have any idea what the cost to get these, the five-year plan, the 10-year plan, is?
Those surveys are in the hands of an architect who's reviewing them for the purposes of composing a plan and estimates. We don't have them back yet.
And I see that we have a new roof going on. What, I'm assuming that obviously we needed it, but two years ago, the Director of Public Works said that the roof that was up there was fine. What's changed since those two years passed?
I am honestly not sure what you're talking about with respect to what the Director of Public Works said two years ago. This roof project was funded, I believe with ARPA funds sometime in the last two years, and went out to bid. The bid was awarded last spring, and we're going forward with a replacement.
No, I'm glad it's going forward. I just didn't understand because two years ago, he sat in front of everybody here and said it still has many more years of life left into it, and here we are. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and thank you for the lovely flowers. Anyone else? Ms. Marina?
Good evening. Kathleen Hunter, North Orchard Street. I would like to recommend that the town adopt a common sense social media policy or adapt a communications policy to cover social media if one exists. This is due to recent posts that I've seen on pages where I would describe them as either divisive or poorly informed or incorrect. First, elected officials as well as appointed individuals for the town, if they wish to communicate with constituents via social media, should maintain a unique page for their town business as opposed to their personal business. However, if an elected official has a pet with a social following, I don't see any reason why that couldn't be on the official page as long as the pet does not hold any strong political opinions. Second, for any social media post on a town-related page, elected officials should remember that they represent the town as a leader and with all of their constituents, whether they agree with them or not. As such, any content presented should have some reasonable boundaries. Articles are to be read and understood prior to posting. Articles should contain content that is relevant to Wallingford or have an identifiable impact to town. Seek educated and well-researched positions. Do not post simply based on your pre-existing personal bias. Come from a verifiable and generally centrist news source, not from one that's highly partisan. And posts should not be speculative in nature such as during the event of an ongoing investigation. Content should be non-divisive and non-inflammatory. If you are experiencing strong emotions, I would recommend that you wait until you're calm prior to posting so that your judgment is not impaired. If you have a burning need to post speculation, please do so on your personal page instead. It should be considered, perhaps with some careful thought, by lawyers who have the best interest of the town's welfare at heart, whether careless posts constitute a legal risk to the town. We are still the land of steady habits, and you are my elected officials. Even though I may disagree with you, you're still a leader, and we still have a lot in common, especially our love for the town. And the business of this body is the business of running this town, not partisan politics. If you are questioning your own post, please consider asking someone who you may have differences with but who you trust ethically to review a post for you. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you very much. Good tips. Anyone else for public comment? Oh, Mr. Sanders, I'm sorry. I saw your hand before.
Thank you. For the record, Joe Sanders, 43 Piper Drive, Wallingford. I didn't bring flowers, but if I did, I think it would probably be for my former neighbor, Mr. Testa, Councilor Testa. So remember that one of the first things that when I moved in and saw you in town, you didn't ask if I was a Republican or Democrat. You just welcomed me to town. That's how we roll. So I wanted, I guess that I have one piece of bad news and two pieces of good news. The bad news is I have no complaints about our drive and what the town's doing there. No complaints. So the two things I did want to do, though, collectively, both as councilors and as mayor, I want to congratulate you for doing an outstanding job in collaborative management of our town. This two years has been a change for all of you. And we have made progress in digital infrastructure, investing in roads, sidewalks, and buildings, a decision on the Community Pool. I didn't say whether I agree or not, but a decision. That's great. Leadership on economic and housing development and budget priorities that have helped to retain a AA1 bond rating. So I think that all of you should give yourselves a round of applause for working together as a group. That's how it should be. I'm glad to see that. I also want to just throw something here, and I have to check my motives and be careful, that what I do here is not to throw shade at any one person, either here or in the audience, but it's a collective reminder that we live in a culture where right now disrespect is loud. And that's probably a lot of what you all hear, unfortunately. Words and dialogue are what we're supposed to do. And in fact, today is the National Day of Remembrance for Charlie Kirk, passed unanimously by the US Senate, passed by the House. So in the spirit of that, in dialogue, I want to just kind of, probably just remind you all the things you already know. Everyone you talk to, when you boil it all down, they're either helping to build things up or tear things down. They're either constructive or they're divisive. And everyone's coming at you with something, and sometimes it's not, sometimes it's agenda. So the best communicator that ever walked the earth, probably the person who made the most amount of change, my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. You don't have to have that as your opinion of him, but everyone that came to Jesus came with an agenda of some sort. And he was really good at getting to the heart of whether there's a legit question I can help with or whether it's just something that I can't help you. And so I just want to remind you of some principles that he encouraged that have changed the world. Forgive people. They don't sometimes understand what they're doing. Ask questions. Seek to understand the motives behind them. Personally, be constructive. And as much as possible, avoid divisive agendas. Think that those are things that have worked well with Wallingford for the last couple of years, and wish you all the best success in the remainder of your campaigns. And for those of you that are re-elected, to encourage you to continue that venture together as mayor and town council for the next two years. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Massimino?
Keith Massimino. Quick question for you guys. Can you run me through how the whole minutes thing works as far as when do you guys receive them? After? Like, let's say the 9th or any other council meeting. When do you normally receive the minutes from the prior meeting?
So the process should be that we receive the minutes seven days after the meeting.
Okay, and is that usually how it works for you? Do you normally, by and large, get those seven days or less?
I don't know. I can't say, you know, your question was usually. I can't say usually. I'm not, I don't really know.
Okay.
But that's the process, though.
The reason I bring it up is that we spoke earlier, and you mentioned that you received the minutes for the 9th meeting on the 23rd. Is that out here?
Correct. That's correct.
Would it surprise the panel, or, I'm sorry, the councilors, to know that it was recorded on the 16th? So it was recorded on the 16th, supposedly. And yet, not one of the council members received it until the 23rd. Well, there's no malfeasance with it.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Miss?
Cheryl D. Genova, 39, Lincoln Avenue. This is kind of like just for the public. I want everyone to realize that they keep saying things about the last 40 years, the last 40 years. That was our prior mayor, and we have a new mayor. And when I bought my house six years ago, I had a punch list. And I go through that punch list by priority and cosmetically. Priority obviously gets paid for first. And then if there's leftover, then the cosmetically gets done. I still have that punch list six years later, and I'm still building on it. So all the work that needs to get done, should get done, takes time. And our current mayor has only had 20 months, not 40 years. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Miss? In the back?
My name is Barbara Cappy, 6 Demme Road in Wallingford. My problem lately has been the driving here.
I'm sorry, Ms. Cappy. If you could just lean into the mic a little better.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have a problem with the driving in Wallingford the last couple of years. It has become increasingly dangerous to be on our roads. Things like passing, I've been passed out on the right-hand side on the ramp going on where Yankee Silver Smith used to be. People crossing Cheshire Road and the old Hartford Turnpike, totally ignoring any form of the lights. Doesn't matter if it's red, whatever. Turning red on left, it's... I would like to see more police presence where they are pulling people over so that people get the idea that you cannot act like this in Wallingford. This is a very safe town, but, and I know we're short on police help, but there's got to be a way that the presence is more pronounced. Merely because the police are in their vehicles and cruising around, I want to see their face. I want to see who's actually out there taking care of us. I'm not afraid of their car. I want them to be able to stop somebody, give them a ticket right in front of whatever business on Colony Street so other people see that people are being stopped, and they don't, we don't want that kind of driving. And I'll be the first to tell you, I got a heavy foot. I'm lead-footed on the highway. Get that out of my way. But when you have somebody going 75 miles an hour on Colony Street and nobody is there, it's frightening. It really is frightening. So I would like to see, I know we're a little short with the police, if we could increase and have them patrolling on foot, not just necessarily in the car. And that's all I've got to say.
Thank you very much. And with that, I will close the public question and answer on to item number six, Discussion of Old Business. Ms. Small, do you have an update on Head in Brook Lane?
Yes, I've been able to, I've resolved an additional easement. Hopefully, I can finish the rest. And we just have to check, one of the fire hydrants is supposed to have a riser, and don't ask me what that means. I don't know. And that's in the works. So hopefully, I have, getting closer to completion here.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Mayor, do we have an update on Community Pool?
Yes, as we heard earlier tonight, we did have a groundbreaking a week ago yesterday. The demolition of the old facility is well underway. We were waiting for a building permit to issue. Part of the holdup on our building permit, which has partially issued, is that the portions of the project that are, that involve permitting from the State Department of Health are under review. So we're waiting to hear from them, and then we'll have a full building permit issued.
Perfect. Thank you very much. I'm moving on to item seven.
Mr. Chairman, first, I'll start with a motion that we approve the September 23rd, 2025 Town Council Minutes.
I will second. I will second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, say by saying aye.
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 Can they continue?
Does the next motion be unrelated? So we're good with that one. That was the 23rd. So on to the minutes of the ninth. September 9th minutes. A concern was brought to the council's attention that a comment made by a member of the public was omitted from the September 9th, 2025 minutes. I, as well as a few other councilors, looked into the matter. I want everyone to know that transparency is paramount for me, and I have and always will work to make sure our minutes are an accurate representation of our meetings. To date, the council has received three memos regarding the issue, which are all public record. One memo from Corporation Council dated 9/26, another memo from the town clerk, also dated 9/26, and one from Chairman Marone dated 10/7. All three memos are public documents and available to the public. Based on my own research and the memos received, I have a couple of outstanding questions that are currently unanswered, but I'm diligently working on getting answered, and I hope to bring this issue to a conclusion soon. Corporation Council has asked me to hold off on certain questioning at tonight's meeting, and I'm respecting that request. However, the Law Department is being very helpful in trying to find the answers to some of my questions, so I appreciate that. Receiving answers sometimes takes longer than I'd like, but I trust that we will have them soon. In the interest of complete transparency and accurate minutes, I'm going to make a motion to add to the minutes under the first section of public comment at the end of Mr. Bill Commerford's comments. Mr. Commerford questioned the mayor, quote, "I just recently saw that there is a lawsuit against you as far as malpractice goes. Is that going to affect your ability to be the mayor? Or are you going to step down while this lawsuit is taking place?" End quote. To which the mayor replied, quote, "At the present time, I'm not aware of what you're talking about, but the short answer is no." End quote. So that is the motion that we add that to the minutes of September 9th.
Second. Okay, discussion on the motion. Counselor Regan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So just for public's sake, are the minutes transcripts of meetings? Or are they about agenda items?
The minutes are not and haven't been in the past a transcript of the meeting, no. So, go ahead, continue.
No, I think I'll let you.
So here's my concern with the, with the motion is, so the item that was asked and answered does not relate to town business, which is against the council's rules. So I think it would be fair to say that a question was asked and answered of a personal nature, but I think to list the thing that's unrelated to town business is a little unfair. And here's why. I think anyone could come to the microphone and say, like Vice Chair Tadd, you were at a fire scene, and this happened, and this happened, and I think, you know, it led to this result, right? And an attempt to impugn your integrity. And I don't know that the council wants to open up the minutes to anything that anyone wants to come to the microphone and talk about. So, I mean, obviously, it's not my decision, right? It's up to the, to the nine of us. But I think that there's, you know, how much do you want to have people's divorces and job terminations and all these kinds of things be a subject to the minutes? I mean, the, you know, when you get elected, you sort of accept that people are going to say mean things about you because that's sort of, you know, their freedom of speech to say those things. But the minutes really belong to us, and it's our record of the meeting. So I don't know that, you know, if we've agreed to put it in the rules to say that we're not going to allow it, allow people to ask questions that are not, that are not germane to town business, then I don't know why the minutes have to be an accurate representation of the things, you know, that what anyone could come up and say in the microphone. But I'll, Mr. Counselor Fishbein.
So I do appreciate that the minutes are a lot better than they have been in the past. I, I will say that. I will tell you that I've won cases all over the state based upon reviewing minutes of various bodies. And sometimes I find it to be very frustrating when it just says, you know, John Smith spoke about parks, right? But when you get down to content, it's, it's, it's been very helpful to me. You know, really, somebody is deciding what goes in the minutes and what doesn't go in the minutes, and then we, or at least I, I can always speak for myself, review those and say, well, is that a reasonable summary of what happened when we met? That's all I can do. For the purposes of where we are, though, I, I would like to know, was there a prior version of the minutes that reflected something about that exchange? Because clearly, what's before us doesn't have that, and that's the purpose of the So I guess that's my first question. I don't know where that's getting directed to. Because was there a point that someone decided when they were putting the minutes together that it was appropriate to add a comment in that section that referenced the exchange that we're talking about in the motion?
So the motion on the floor, though, is whether that gets included in the, in the minutes or not, right?
Yes.
So I understand the question, but...
So, and the reason why I ask is whomever we have deemed to be appropriate to make those decisions may have at one point put together alternative language that they thought was appropriate. And I'd like to know what that language, and you may tell me, no, we've never had it in a version of the minutes. So that's I'd like to know to begin with before I can consider what's before us.
Understood. I mean, I would opine that no one has the ability to adjust the minutes outside of the council as a whole, right? So whoever the, the author of the minutes creates the minutes, and that no one else should have any input into how the minutes are handled outside of the council as a body, right? So...
Your Honor, I would ask the witness to direct, answer the question.
But, so I don't know the answer to your question.
Okay.
Okay? So I, I think that's one of the things that the, that, I think it's part of a larger topic that I'm not prepared to discuss at this time.
Okay, well, and I sort of understand the nebulous place that we're at. But personally, I don't want, if the motion succeeds, I don't want to close the door on my question and what would result from that question. Since I haven't gotten a no, I guess I have to assume that at one point there was some language there. So, you know, perhaps, because I don't want to see that door closed. Perhaps I would be more, more comfortable with holding the minutes, which we've held minutes for months.
Agreed.
And doing this the proper way. So that's all I have to say at this point. So thank you.
Counselor Testa.
Thank you. There were, I know we received a, a letter, I know, from a past council secretary and who mentioned that many years ago, she used to basically prepare transcriptions of our meetings, pretty close. And even after her, our last full-time council secretary was pretty much doing something similar, which in a lot of cases led to a dramatic delay in getting these things prepared. So there was a time, again, where we were probably getting transcription records as if we were at court and there was a stenographer or court reporter. However, that was, that was just by someone's desire to do that. It had nothing to do with the requirements of minutes or the law. And for years, I, I've been told this and I've seen it, that the law simply requires the minutes of a public meeting to record actions that were taken and votes that were taken. And there's also mention of who was there, you know, stuff like that, who was in attendance. But in no way does the law say that minutes have to be a transcription of what was said and what happened. That's the law. At the same time, for a long time, we've had recordings of our meetings, which the town clerk or secretary used to use to take the transcriptions. So I'm assuming that those recordings are still always available. For example, and I would just, I know Counselor Fishbein mentioned how useful minutes were in many cases that he, he was working on. But whether or not the minutes that he looked up answered his questions or not, I'm assuming that there would be transcriptions available that towns keep, that any lawyer or researcher or investigator could ask to see in order to get the information they need. But still, while that's a nice thing, it's not required. Okay? I like when there's a little bit more in there to see what's going on. It helps. But again, as soon as you start doing that, you are opening it up to the discretion of the minute maker. Okay? They're listening, watching, saying, okay, let me write it in that this person approached, asked about this, and we went on. That is not even necessary, but they're doing that. But again, now there's discretion. So if we wanted to start getting into discussions about what really should and should not be in here, then we should pass our own rule. Otherwise, you're always going to have discretion. Given the motion that we're supposed to be talking about, there's no requirement that it needs to be in our minutes, first of all. None. Okay? If, given the, again, how the, the nature of how our minutes are done with some information about the conversations that go on, not just the debates and the votes, maybe I, I respect the chair's comment that if we're going to even include it in our, the record of our meeting, it should be directly related to, he said town business, but I would correct that and say items on the agenda. I mean, that's, what are we discussing? Not, now, public question and answer, different story. But I'm, I'm getting there. But if you're going to say, let's include commentary as well, if we think it was important, again, who thinks it's important? Then it should always be directly related to what's on the agenda, because we're not allowed to talk about anything else anyway. Which leads us to the public question and answer period. How we record that is something we really should talk about, because that's what this is all about. That's something that's not even mentioned in state law directly. So we have a public question and answer period. Do we, as a council, want our minutes, the written minutes, to reflect that part of the meeting? And if so, then we need to get together and work something out and say, we want the questions mentioned, and we want the answers mentioned. Or we just want to say, you know, somebody got up and asked a question about community pool, and it was answered. Okay? Having said all that, you also said the, the, the final arbiter of what our minutes have, they are, is, are us. Arbiters are us. So which is why we have the opportunity at a meeting to amend the minutes. We do it all the time. Simple things, you know, I wasn't here, I abstained, you didn't know that I abstained, that's a vote. So we, we make adjustments all the time. So Counselor Tadd's motion is in order, that we could adjust these minutes to reflect that that question was asked and answered, if you want to include it. Keeping in mind, once we start doing that, where do we stop? Every meeting, someone can say, I'm going to amend the meeting, the minutes, because during that question and answer period, that person said a lot of things that I feel strongly should be in our minutes. And we could do that, too. So just food for thought. A lot of food, but it's the way it is. It is a big deal when we talk about this, because that, now, when this all came up, you know, there was the implications, the accusations of malfeasance, accusations of potentially breaking the law. Okay? We all know that altering a public record is a felony. We know that. However, my understanding is our minutes are not a public record until we adopt them. So everything up to that point is draft. So I would, I would, I would strongly argue against any suggestion or implication to the public that, you know, somebody broke the law, if in fact, there was one draft of minutes that was altered before we, we adopted it. But that drafting and changes during drafting, really, it's, that's always going to be up to the clerk or whoever's writing them. Now, how that happened, if we want to have a special investigative meeting on that, that's fine, but not, tonight's not the night for that. Finally, I was a little uneasy about the fact that anyone would have seen what was going to be our minutes before we did to adopt them. So I can only assume that they were at some, one point in a packet. And then were they, was the change made after the packet was prepared but before we adopted it? And that was the only question that nags at me. But, you know, we can get an answer for that down the road. I spoke a lot, but I think it's important to, to really understand and appreciate those points that I made, because they've been made on me many times in the past. Thank you for your indulgence.
Thank you. So two things on that. One, so the reason I said town business is because our, our rules say that the questions should be limited to policy and operation of town government. So I paraphrased a bit, but that's what, those are the rules we voted on. Number two, I would have no problem with Counselor Fishbein's suggestion, just to hold off if we have lingering questions, we can approve these minutes at some other point. Going on to Counselor Tadd.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to clarify, one, Counselor Testa's comments. So the reason for my wanting to put this in was because going on past precedent, we have, and including in these minutes, every other public comment was included. So the fact that only one was not, and we can certainly talk about going forward, what we want to include, what we don't, but keeping that past precedent, it seemed to me that if all the other ones were listed, that that one should be too. And then just as an aside to Chairman Marone, just for the record, I'm unaware of mishandling any fire scene, so I do take some umbrage with that comment and just wanted that on the record. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Did not mean to cast dispersions on your firefighting abilities. Counselor Fishbein.
Yeah, just to that point, or part of that point, I'm looking at the minutes, and it appears that during the public question and answer section, there is a paragraph, it's six lines long, which addresses Mr. Commerford speaking about creating an agenda item for the next town council meeting, about the potential concrete courts, so on and so forth. So I don't think the question, I mean, it's like sort of what Counselor Testa was talking about, where is that balance? Because certainly, he is mentioned in the proposed minutes before us. So I just wanted to sort of correct that if, if I heard something incorrect. So the question is whether or not to insert additional language which addresses the issue, which I don't care about the issue. I really don't. I care about the process, right? And that's what I'm concerned about, you know, as Counselor Testa sort of says, as I sort of said, you know, if there was an, an issuance or a draft of minutes, and then there was a change to that minutes, I think how that came to be is something that we should know. And that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on this topic? Okay, so the motion was made and seconded. Madam Kirk, would you kindly call the role on the motion?
Mr. Chairman...
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Ms., Counselor Allison. Please continue.
Listen, okay, sorry. Um, so... You know, in this modern age, where I am benefiting from the fact that we televised and streamed our meetings, I do think that the minutes can be, I, I agree essentially with Chairman Marone's statement of the minutes being, you know, making sure that they're relevant to the matters at hand, especially when, if there are questions or needs for some expansion, whether it's for, you know, an investigation on part of a legal case or whether it's like a, you know, as, as Counselor Fishbein was demonstrating, or if it was, you know, a need for expansion on a particular topic, these are always available. I'm one of the people who has trolled the videos on YouTube to try to find information when I was looking for the, the, you know, a certain... the, you know, a certain thing that I couldn't find as part of the minutes. I think that it's important that we keep a separate matter of the minutes to, you know, a summary level. And I know that it's also very difficult to transcribe as one would in a courtroom, the minutes themselves as, and like a full representation of the data that is discussed in our meetings. So I understand, you know, the spirit of the motion. I just, I don't necessarily agree, because I do think that this opens up, it opens up a lot of questions, especially when you, you know, all of us, I think, are familiar with the court of public opinion to some degree on social media. And I think that when we start to include comments, such as those which are not necessarily meant to be helpful, but more are derisive, I think that, you know, there is some question of propriety as far as including them in the record of the meeting or the official business of the meeting, if you will. The minutes, in my opinion, are meant to represent the business of the meeting, not necessarily every question that, appropriate or inappropriate, that can be asked of us. That's really all I have to say. And, you know, I'm, whichever way this goes, it's, it is, it kind of is what it is. The fact that we're discussing this at such length means that somebody someday is going to be looking for that in the minutes. So I, I think that we do have to discuss, we or the next council have to discuss as part of our council rules, you know, how we handle these, this business going forward now that we're kind of opening the door to the question of these records. So I appreciate your time and I end up.
Thank you very much. My apologies again for not recognizing you sooner. Counselor Laffin.
Thank you. Certainly, as it's been stated, a discussion could be necessary or will occur on process and better understanding of how to move forward with just how things are generated and why other people had copies of the minutes before we did. But as far as content goes, in my 14 years here on the council, I don't recall a time whenever anything outside of operations, business, policy that was in tune with the personal business, as Counsel, as Chairman Marone had stated, had ever been included in the minutes like that. Whether it was stated in a public question and answer period or it was thrown out as a disparaging comment during debate or discussion. So, and for that reason, I, I don't support the motion.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Counselor Fishbein?
You know, I'm concerned about the political nature of utilizing public question and answer and how that may, or may not, be reflected in minutes that are approved or denied on potentially a political basis. But at the end of the day, the question I think that was asked was not a proper question for a town council meeting. So I think the motion as presented contains a level of information that is not relevant to council business. And therefore, I'd make a motion to amend the motion to say a personal question was asked of the mayor and he answered the question. So moved.
Second. All right, discussion on the amendment. Counselor Tada.
So the reason I used the direct quotes in my motion was because I did not want this to be political. That was the reason for the direct quote. So I thought that the cleanest way to simply recognize that a comment was left out, but to keep it non-political, was to use a direct quote, which was the reason for the motion as stated. Thank you.
So then, but by using a direct quote, it's kind of a departure from procedure also, right? So it's sort of like an unprecedented territory in either direction. So I'm not saying you're wrong, I'm just, I'm just trying to think it out loud. Counselor Laffin?
So are we going to note every single time a personal comment or question is made during the council meetings for, for now going forward? Because this, this would be precedent setting to make that adjustment. I understand where you're coming from, Counselor Fishbein, but that's the consideration going through my head then, that an official vote, actually, the nine of us, would be making that precedent setting. And every other campaign in the past, when people have come to the mic that we have not gone over with a fine-tooth comb, comments made during campaign periods where clearly candidates are up for the sake of just campaigning. Do we have to go back and redo all those too? Like, when, when does it start? When does it end?
So, if I may, so you would just have the motion, you would vote against the motion because you don't think it's appropriate to be included in the minutes and therefore you're sort of meeting my need and you're going a step further, is that?
Yes.
Okay, no, I just, so that I understand where you're coming from.
I understand where you're coming from. And my opposition to the amendment is included, encapsulated in my opposition to the entire motion.
Okay, I'm glad to hear that. Okay.
Anyone else on this? Okay, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll on the amendment? So this is an internal council matter, I don't believe it's appropriate to have public comment on this. Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you kindly call the roll?
Allison?
I, I honestly, I, I agree with the spirit of the motion, so I'm sorry, I'm kind of discussing this. And so I agree with the spirit of the motion. However, I don't, I don't think that this is appropriate to include at all. So for that reason, I'm saying, I'm saying no. But I do understand and I do appreciate the proposed change.
Okay, so that was a no.
Carmody?
Yes.
Fishbein?
Yes.
Laffin?
No.
Regan?
No.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Tada?
No.
Testa?
Yes.
Marone?
I vote yes and the motion passes. Okay, so now we go to the, the, the motion as amended. Any discussion on the motion as amended? All right, Madam Clerk, would you?
So the, so the motion as amended was, can, would you be able to read that again, Counselor Fishbein?
A personal question was asked of the mayor and he answered the question.
So the only options right now are that or nothing?
Correct, or make another motion. Okay. Anyone else on this topic? Madam Clerk, trying to call the roll?
Allison?
No.
Carmody?
Yes.
Fishbein?
Yes.
Laffin?
No.
Regan?
No.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Tada?
Uh, I vote no.
Testa?
Yes.
Marone?
I vote yes and the motion passes. Moving on to number eight. Discussion possible action regarding municipal option for permanently and totally disabled veterans. Good evening, gentlemen, if you could introduce yourself for the record?
I'm Kevin Coons, a Wallingford assessor.
Ian Fuller, chief appraiser.
Good evening, what have you for us tonight?
I'm not sure, let's see. So I sent a memo to the mayor dated September 30th. And I also, to follow up with that, I sent a memo or a recommendation memo. I was, I believe the council received that to review. So last year for the 2024 grant list, there was a new state statute that we were required to exempt the value of dwellings for 100% totally and permanently and totally disabled veterans. So now this year, the state has allowed towns to adopt certain municipal options to expand that program. One of the, I guess one of the issues, the main issues that we had to deny several veterans last year because they, for one reason or another, one reason was they were less than 100% disabled. So they did not qualify according to the statute at that point. And the other was surviving spouses. We did, we sent out a lot of letters, I'm kind of jumping around here, but we did send out a lot of letters, or about 250 letters, to veterans that had some, some type of a disability rating to let them know that they're, they may possibly be eligible for your, this significant exemption. So we did get a lot of response. We granted the exemption to about 32 or 35 folks or veterans. But unfortunately, we were able to, we had to deny a number of veterans this exemption. And particularly, there were veterans who were unemployable, I guess, but they were receiving, their rating, their disability rating from the VA was less than 100%. But they were being paid as if the benefit was 100%.
Yeah, due to their unemployability, they get paid at 100% rate, even though their disability rating is less than 100%. So these folks were not eligible for it under the, the original writing of the public act. And with this municipal option, it would allow us to grant it to, I think right now it's about 10, 10 veterans that we had to deny previously, even though they are eligible for other exemptions. Like we have a triple exemption for anyone who is totally or permanently disabled. These TDIU veterans do count for that exemption, but not for this, the exemption of the whole dwelling on their house.
And looking at some of the, the conversations back and forth since this started, the I guess it was intended, or there, from my, what I understand, it was intended to grant these exemptions to these folks that were particularly unemployable. There are about 12 or 1300 veterans roughly in the state that fell, fell under that category. And from what I understand, that the exemption was designed for those folks in particular because of their unemployability. So I kind of, in my outline, in my memo to the mayor, I kind of outlined what the impact would be if the town council were to grant any one of these municipal options. We, I guess we kind of wanted to get ahead of this. I know, I think I spoke a few minutes ago, but our staff, particularly Ian, had to take, you know, some difficult phone calls when folks like these did not qualify under the statute. So Ian and the rest of my staff were very patient. We did get some calls from surviving spouses who were, they discovered they were not eligible, as well as some folks that were under this unemployability category. So there were other municipal options. One was to increase or to extend the exemption to the land value up to two acres. But anything above two acres would not be exempt. I have a good friend in Meriden who, he received the exemption last year. He's 100% disabled, he qualified, he got his exemption for his house. And now he's, he's asking to have it, you know, the, the additional two acres be exempt. And he certainly has every right to do that in Meriden. So I, I kind of anticipated some of this, some veterans coming in and bringing this to the town council. So I wanted to sort of get ahead of it in case you did have some questions to be, you know, to be prepared. So that's my, sort of my goal for this evening. I don't know if some of my recommendations would be to grant it to the folks that are unemployable under that TDIU category. And secondly, to a surviving spouse who's, who's veteran, the veteran passed away prior to October 1st of 2024. And there is language in the municipal option that sort of indicates that the legislative body would have to pick a date, a starting date. So in order to, my recommendation, if the council were to go that route, would be I would recommend maybe October 1st of 2000. That way we would, it would cover the the surviving spouses that we're aware of that came in or, or contacted our office. I didn't want to put in a date and then have somebody not be eligible because we missed it by a year, so I think that year is probably fair. So that's, it's kind of been a, and all the other towns in Connecticut right now are kind of going through the same thing, whether they should adopt any of these municipal options or not. I do have some towns, a middle, a middle town is considering the unemployability one. Shelton, they're not going to be doing it. I have a list of others, but that could have changed since I've spoken to them too, so. But I'm not sure if you had any questions for me or?
Yeah, going to Counselor, starting with Counselor Regan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of points of clarification. The list that went out to 250 people, what was the source of that information? What, your disability rating and if it was 100%?
We asked that we, so the first letter, I have kind of a timeline. That went out in October of 2024. I did, I, I looked at a letter that the town of Groton sent, sent out and I amended it somewhat. I got permission from that assessor to use that letter. It just says, in light of recent legislative changes to the Connecticut general statutes regarding veterans exemption, we are requesting updated information regarding your, your status with the VA. More or less, we're asking them to bring in their proof of disability, whether they are 100% disabled or not. And if their disability is, what's the word, service-related or service-connected permanent and total disability rating. So I, I just kind of sent this letter out trying to let them know that they may be eligible or possibly eligible for this type of exemption.
So full disclosure, I am a VA-recognized, service-disabled vet. Not looking for this for my own personal reasons, as I might, I would not qualify for these programs, even though being in the program. It was how those 250 people were chosen, I don't recall ever getting a letter, for instance.
We have a, an exemption database that we extracted the information from. Anyone who had any disability rating in the database is who we sent out the letter to.
Database from who?
What was that?
Database from who?
Our internal office database. Veterans bring in their disability rating letters to us because there are exemptions available to them for any disability rating 10% and up.
So I would have to present my own paperwork? So I would have to present my own paperwork to you to be on the list to notify me that there's?
Yes.
Okay, that seems a little flawed.
Well, we, I mean, it's not public information, people's veterans disability rating. We can't really access it unless it's given to us.
Understood, but there are ways through the Department of Veterans Affairs to give you a yes or no list. There's a number of online lookup tools that you can look up individual people's disability just as a yes/no kind of question. So I, I know we're going into the calculation part of this. I'm all for it, and I'd like to move this forward and set the precedence for other towns. I may be biased a little bit, but I think it's, it's in a good way. My concern, probably not so much, is that if we're thinking that it affects 30 individuals, what if it affects 60? What if it affects 100? What if it affects more? I mean, the percentage of vets, I know veterans who've just been discharged in the last 90 days or so that have received a VA disability letter, that's not, that is not making its way to your office yet. So, so I think an outreach of some type to the populace, whenever we do have some other general information to send out to people, would be to submit that information to be considered for other programs like this in the future. So outside of that, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adopt options 1, 2, and 4, as set out in the memo sent to us by Mr. Coons with the start date of October 1st, 2020? Question mark?
Second.
Well, I mean, it was, I guess, I'm sorry, it was a malformed, did you say 2020 or 2024?
This would be 2025, October 1st of 2025 is when these would go into effect.
Okay. With the start date of?
You had referenced the date of 2020 earlier.
I'm sorry, maybe I misspoke. It was October 1st of 2000, would be a start date.
Excuse me, you were referencing the survivor's spouse, that's, that's where the 20, 2000 came from.
Okay.
So this is a, an exemption going forward, in the case of the surviving spouse, you can pick, if there's a surviving spouse today on October 1st, you can pick how many years back you're going to go as to when they became the surviving spouse and say, within that timeframe, you can, going forward, claim that exemption. So you have to set that date, that's, that's the 2000, did I say that right?
Correct, yes.
Okay, so if you rephrase, I heard 1, 2, and 4.
So 1, 2, and 4 with a start date of October 1st, 2000?
Okay.
Period.
Second. Okay, motion's made.
Just for the surviving spouse one, that's, that's the only one that applies to.
Okay, understood. All right, motion's made in second, discussion on the motion, going to councillor Fishbein.
You know, I share a small concern about the number of people, but you know, quite frankly, to be eligible, you had to have become 100% disabled, serving our country. Not that you got into a motor vehicle accident when you came back here or something, but it's serving, so I think they should all get it and, you know, if it's a significant impact, then we deal with it at that point. But I have to ask the question, because I was going to move all four. So for whatever reason, the motion that's before us is not going to the extent it seems that we could go here. So, and, and you didn't recommend number 3. You didn't recommend number 1 either. So I'm in support of the motion, but my question is, why not do number 3 also?
Well, there are, in my memo, there are about five veterans who would, their exemption would be reduced if we were to choose a median assessed value. The other issue that, and it's been kicked around a little bit in our assessors community, that the median assessed value, there's a question of whether we use the median overall assessed value for building and land, or if it means the median assessed value for just a building. So that's kind of a gray area, so that's why, one of the reasons certainly that I didn't highlight this option.
So on its face, you're saying that it would negatively impact those five veterans?
Yes, at least five, possibly more if we were to only use the median assessed value of the building.
Okay, and when we're dealing with an exemption, that means that they, they don't pay taxes?
They don't pay taxes on that, that portion of their gross assessed value.
Yeah, so somebody with a single-family residence on a one-acre parcel that is 100% disabled would not pay any taxes?
He would only pay taxes on the land or if there was an outbuilding.
Okay, but if we adopt the two-acre land exemption as part of what's before us, they would pay no taxes?
They would pay taxes if they had in excess of two acres.
Yeah, no, my scenario was, single-family residential dwelling on one acre, they would not pay taxes?
Correct.
If we were to adopt this motion?
Correct, unless there is.
Unless there's an outbuilding.
Well, no, unless there's a minimum assessment, that's something that we would have to iron out, there may be possibly a minimum assessment somewhere in the statute or the language.
Because I gotta tell you, this is the issue that I got more calls about over the last legislative session, and I was like, you guys, you gotta figure this out. So now I'm back here with what I hope we can fix here and across the state. What is, what's this minimum assessment thing?
I, I may be speaking out of line, I, there may. In some other statutes, there may be a minimum value that they would have to pay on, but I, I, let me take that back, that it would be completely exempt, to answer your question.
Okay, because, you know, I know it's been very gray up until now.
Yeah.
And if we say to our veterans that, you know, you have a single-family dwelling on one acre, we're not going to charge you property taxes, and they come over here and they say, well, I got this letter and it says I got a minimum payment, then we look like liars.
Of course.
So, Janice, do you know what the answer is?
I don't recall that from when we met and went over the statute, so, I mean, that was, I think, a couple of months ago, but I think that if, if that was in there, we would have put it in the memo. It would have ended up in the memo, so I, I think that he misspoke on, on that issue.
Yeah, I'd take that back.
Because it would, it would have been in the memo if there was some minimum. And we went over it at the time, we were talking about it, so I think we would have picked that up, so.
Okay, well, I, I appreciate, because there is, if, if there is a minimum, that would be established by state statute, which we couldn't control, but I'd just like to be able to inform people what we're actually doing. So I am in support of the motion, and I thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, onto councillor Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, my question came before councillor Regan's motion, and so I guess, I probably don't have a question, but, I mean, just to councillor Regan's point, based on the estimates that you have here of like what the, would be at least, right?
Correct.
So at least $60,000 for the two-acre land exemption, at least $30,000 for the surviving spouse exemption. The median assessed value thing, it sounds like it might change things around, so I'm just going to stay away from that, but then a minimum, at least $50,000 for number 4, which is the total disability, which you recommended in the original memo, numbers, the total disability as well as the surviving spouse exemption. So if we were to take all of these minus the median one, that would be 30 plus 60 plus 50, so 140,000 at least.
At least.
Okay, that's all the information I needed, I just wanted to make sure I was understanding it. Thank you.
Thank you, onto councillor Testa.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, gentlemen, for your, for your work and your presentation. For clarification purposes, the, it appears that you're saying that right now, according, we are, basically $170,000 is the cost of the program right now for those with 100% service-related disability across the board?
For the state-mandated.
Like right now?
Yep.
That's happening?
Yes.
Those are the people that get it?
They've been approved, yeah.
So we're looking to add, okay, add to this. The two-acre land exemption, again, it, it extends the, the assessment exemption to, to land out other than just the dwelling, up to two acres.
Correct.
Would that, if we grant number 4, that would apply to both, right?
Yes, it would.
Okay, fine, and that's, so that's another, so that's 60,000. The surviving spouse exemption, that only applies to those who are currently 100% permanently disabled, correct? Because the way it's written, if we pass number 4, does that carry, the surviving spouse exemption apply to those people? Because it doesn't look like it.
I believe it would.
It's not written that way.
So the surviving spouse, this, because if the veteran passed away prior to October 1st of '24, the local option would allow us to grant the exemption to the spouse of a veteran who passed prior to October 1st of 2024.
Right, I have that. So right now, there's no surviving spouse exemption?
There is a surviving spouse exemption, but only if the veteran passed away after October 1st of 2024.
Oh.
That's the way the state is.
Oh, just something new. What I'm saying, so no one's used it yet?
No one has used it yet that I'm aware of, no.
So that's, I mean, there isn't one? There hasn't been one?
There hasn't been one, or?
So now we're adding it, so this would allow a surviving spouse of someone who had a 100% rated service-related disability to receive this exemption to some, to be determined prorated year in the past? Or is the year in the past date just going to make it, make them eligible and it's only going to still be from this day forward?
It's only going to be for the 25 grade list.
But the, but the qualification criteria will be 2010 or 2001 or whatever it is?
Yes, whenever they.
That's perfect, I love that too. But I still, I, I still think the way this is written, the, the spouse exemption wouldn't carry over to those covered in number 4. Just, unless you wrote it in such a way. You wrote it in such a way that it only affects 100% permanently rated. It doesn't, it doesn't address spouses of the new people that we are going to allow to take advantage of this because they're being paid as if they were 100%, even though their rating is not 100%. We're adding this program for those veterans, but it doesn't look like a spouse exemption would apply to those veterans, the way this is written.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Uh, somewhat.
Oh, I'm just blurring us.
So the TDIU spouse wouldn't be eligible for?
Well, you know, I would not be eligible.
If they were the surviving spouse, I think that's what he's.
Taking vitamins.
Yeah, that's an angle I didn't look at.
Yeah.
Say that again louder.
That was an angle that I.
Oh, no, I was talking to Craig.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Craig said, "You're right." He was talking about me. Craig said, "But he stood there and he said, 'You're right.'" That goes in the minutes.
And we have to follow the statutory language, so, I mean, we can double-check it, I don't, but I don't, the exemptions are strictly construed as to what's put in the statute, so we can double-check that.
Okay. I mean, I, I'm in favor of all this, I think it's great, I appreciate the work, I just want to make sure that language is clarified, and I too think that number 3 would be a mistake. Let's use the real value and go with it from there. That's it, thank you.
Anyone else on this item? To the public, any public comment on this item? All right, Madam Clerk, would you kindly call the roll?
Yes.
Harmandy?
Yes.
Fishbein?
Yes.
Laffin?
Yes.
Regan?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Tata?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Moron?
I vote yes, and the motion is unanimous. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
All right, next we move on to number 9, discussion and presentation regarding the Good evening, if you kindly introduce yourself for the record.
Good evening, my name's Louis Gill, I'm the CEO for Columbus House. We have operated the Wallingford Emergency Shelter for a number of years. So Wallingford has had a long tradition of supporting the emergency shelters. Pillars of this community made it possible and continue to support it. I really appreciate the opportunity to speak with you at this time. I appreciate being in a process to discuss this, because last year's opening was not efficient, and we do not want anything like that ever again. I've been meeting with community leaders, both elected, heads of corporations, heads of nonprofits, banking institutions, everyone has expressed a desire to see this facility open on time and for the duration of the cold season. One of the first things I was told was that you guys had never really had a chance to look at the data from the shelter. So on page 3 of the presentation, there's just a quick table by year that breaks down individuals and the average beds that were filled by ages. We have a couple of pieces of data points here. There are, unfortunately, individuals fleeing domestic violence that have utilized the shelter, and they have needed a safe place to stay because being shut in with that is very difficult. In my history, I also ran a domestic violence rape crisis facility, and so I'm quite aware of how harmful that can be to families. On page 4, our shelter breakdown, so we've always operated December 1st, well, we have always wanted to operate December 1st through March 31st. We're open 4:00 PM to 7:00 AM, that's simply a staffing matter. During extreme weather, it stays open 24 hours as well on Sundays. We've partnered with local law enforcement, faith groups, hospitals, everybody that also has individuals seeking a warm space or that come into contact. We also have a relationship with the YMCA so that individuals staying with us have the ability to go there to stay warm. The budget is in line with other facilities throughout the state. Our average cost per bed is consistent. We have been raising money for this because we know we've got to show up with something and try. And so, so far to date, we've raised 62,000. Just had a conversation with the MMW CAN, there's another 10,000 that they have pledged, so that we're now at 72,000. So what's this make possible? Homelessness is a crisis. There's nothing good happening. Unfortunately, we're in a part of the world that if you're outside, it can have very negative outcomes. Y'all receive the calls, right, from business owners, homeowners, people are outside and they want them to be inside, they don't want them in the doorways, they don't want them in danger. If we get the chance to actually connect with somebody, we get to find out what caused the crisis. You get to assess what's going on, what's keeping them from being successful in housing. Why did they? Why did they fall out? All right, so I've been doing this work for more than 22 years. I'm new to this part of the world and to this job. They recruited me out of California. So I will probably be coming back and asking you guys how to survive a real winter because this is gonna be a new thing for me. But I'm very aware of what happens with exposure and what can happen outside. With the support from the council, we can have a regional solution. Unfortunately, none of, it is not possible to have all services in each town. There just aren't resources available. So there has to be collaboration. So why does it matter? Well, people try and stay near to home. The closest they can stay is what they'll do. But when they fall out of housing, they'll look for it. If we don't have a place for people to go, then contact will be made at the most expensive points. Those two very expensive points, either law enforcement or an emergency room. Last time I checked, I don't know what the cost is here in this town. Just to pick somebody up, book, transport can be over $1,000. That's just one. We also gave you a little bit more program data to take a look at what we did. I didn't want you to feel that you didn't have an understanding of who's there and how we're serving them. I think it's interesting that only 14% were 65-plus in this last year. I can tell you that we are seeing that increase. Fixed incomes are not rising. Housing costs are. And we are seeing more and more seniors falling out of housing. Okay, so this is a thing that I just want to make sure that I make clear. I don't know a single family that hasn't been touched by a behavioral health issue or chemical dependency or alcoholism. I mean, if we all think of the people that we know, we have either direct relatives, siblings, family members. So these folks we're talking about, they're not somebody else. They're family. So outcomes and realistic expectations. 18 weeks in this housing market is not enough time to get someone placed in permanent housing, but what it does allow us to do, we can actually make contact and get them document-ready so that they are ready to move in. We also, when we do an assessment and we get in front of somebody, we get to see, we have something that tests their morbidity. What's going on? Then they go on to a by-name list, which gives them a priority into housing. But if we can't make contact, if they don't come inside, we never get that opportunity. The other thing that is a part of this for diversion is that if we find an individual or a family that has family somewhere else that can receive them, right, if they have a safe, supportive place to go, we'll get them on the bus. We'll make sure that they get to go home. Because we would much rather have somebody in a safe, loving, secure place than having to work through the system. If we don't get the funds, what's our contingency plan? The people are gonna be outside. Why is it important? Local control. State's not gonna bail us out. We have to take care of problems that exist in our communities. Without local investment, it's not possible. Now, how can we be good stewards and how can we be a good partner? We can provide any reporting you need on weekly bed utilization. We can give you monthly budget to actuals. We can have a postseason debrief if you guys feel like we could have done something better and you want to have a conversation about us modifying how we serve. We can, I'm willing to talk about staffing models and even the way that we do it. We want to be a good partner. Caring for one another is kind of the point. Y'all have the power to do that. There's a quote that I love that one of the speakers before reminded me of. "The whole thing that we're trying to do is to create a community of compassion such that God might recognize it." I truly hope that you will partner with us. Thank you very much for the opportunity to talk to you, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Starting with Counselor Fishbein.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
You mentioned that you're recent, recently came to Connecticut. How long have you been affiliated with the Columbus House?
I took over responsibility in June.
Okay. And is it fair to say that you were not involved with Columbus House prior to that?
That is 100% fair to say. I was in Kern County, California.
Yeah, okay. So you came over here to...
I came over here and the first thing I did was handed a newspaper article about the relationship with the Wallingford City Council by my neighbor. And so I said, "I need to go meet some folks in that town." And so I started making meetings.
So, you know, I, I agree that being homeless, it's, you know, is your most vulnerable time of your, your, your life. More than likely, don't have any personal possessions for the most part or things that many of us have and, you know, especially in the cold winter months. And I mean, one of the things you said is, if we don't partner, the people are gonna be outside. And I got that, right? But what happened last year, I would have hoped that those individuals that decided to not let us know that the shelter was not planning to open, heard those words, too.
So the words that I want you to hear from me is the reason I'm here is because I never want that to occur again. I want to make sure that I do everything I can to make you guys aware of where we are. That's why I've been as transparent as I can financially. And truly, I'm here because we need to have a relationship for this.
No, and I, and I appreciate that. With all due respect, you just got here, right?
Yeah.
You know, so, you know, so, yeah, I, I look forward to exchange. Who owns the property right now that...
Columbus House.
Columbus House owns? So even the, the long-term shelters that are on the side?
The permanent housing that's there, yeah.
Yeah, I think it's like six months is supposed to be the occupation. And, and what's the status of the, are those full now?
It's my understanding that they are, yes.
Okay. You know, I did, a couple of years ago, I did the, a mock tour. I started up in Rocky Hill at the 211 Center. Call, you know, if you need help for, for various things, right?
Sure.
And they triage you through the, and, and, you know, and did the whole thing and, you know, got on the bus and went to Middletown and, you know, did an intake and then actually sat down with people that are living in Middletown homeless. They're, you know, it's a long-term shelter there. It's not, you know... And I asked them about Wallingford. And, you know, I learned a lot about Wallingford. As far as the facility or the services were not to the nth, we'll say, that Middletown offers. So the model that you're presenting to us potentially is similar to that which we had previously, which was just the cold winter months. And people were basically not allowed to stay there during the day. It was just an overnight situation. Is that...
Correct.
Okay.
That's the staffing pattern that I understood that the council had an appetite for.
Well, you know, I gotta tell you, I... With a lot of nonprofit agencies, we identify a need. We have somebody that comes to us and says, "I can meet that need." And there's a level of trust. So, micromanaging, I've, I've been up here 15 years and we've never micromanaged the emergency shelter. We never had the level of complaints that we had last year. So I would have to say that previous to that, the service that was being rendered was appropriate, but, you know, I'm concerned about the mom, personally concerned about the mom who can't pay her rent and she gets evicted and she's got a little baby.
Yeah.
And I've got an emergency shelter in the town of Wallingford that's kicking her out in the morning because she can't stay there during the day. So how is that a good service?
So what I would tell you is that there would never be a mom with a child in that shelter. What we would do is take a regional approach and they'd be down at the family triage in New Haven at Columbus House because the individual would need to be able to stay inside. So the reason that there is that overnight is historically, that's what people have been comfortable with here. We would be happy to have the facility run 24 hours, but it would require additional staffing because that's just a safety issue.
So my understanding is that people that were transferred from the Wallingford facility were going to Middletown and...
That is one, and the other would also be down to New Haven. It would depend.
And what's Columbus House's relationship with the Middletown facility? Because I don't think that's run by Columbus House.
No, it's not. There's three other places up in the MMW CAN. And so we refer between those three.
Okay, that's, that's fair. You know, from my perspective, I just want to know that if we are appropriating taxpayer dollars with the intent of meeting a need for individuals that are in their most sensitive time of their life, more than likely... I was pretty mad when I heard what happened last year. I was, I was, I was pretty mad. So I look forward to perhaps things getting better, but I'm very wary. So I just want that to be said. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Onto Counselor Testa.
Good evening. Thank you for being here. Now, the, excuse me. You show on the budget snapshot, you, you list 184,000 as the base operation budget.
That's correct.
Now, does that include the two, two-family homes? Or is that a separate budget?
No, that's separate. That's completely separate.
That's handled separately?
That's completely separate. Those funds never get mixed.
Okay, and does any of the money the town give you go towards those homes?
From if you help us...
Like our budgetary contribution?
No, it would go to the emergency shelter.
Oh, so it's just the emergency shelter itself? Now, the, how many, many months does that open?
The Wallingford shelter, the...
Yeah, the one with the 184.
December 1st through March 31st.
Four months?
Correct.
I know I can do the math myself, but... Because I was curious what the monthly cost...
Per bed cost is.
It's about 46.
Yep.
So, okay, so that answers a lot of questions. So it's about 46 a month. I just remember when we tried to straighten things out last year, I, I think, I, I lost track of how much we... What was the additional money we had to, we had to give them? Was it 30? Roughly 30, right? Just to get you through?
I honestly, Counselor, am not certain.
Okay. So realistically, you were only, according to this budget, you're probably only about one month short. And the reason I started looking into the monthly expenses is because we had been, the, the question had arisen in the public, so to speak, that why can't we have a year-round shelter? Why can't it be open 12 months a year?
Sure.
Is it reasonable to assume that that would cost 46 times 12? Or would it be less? Because, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Because the annual cost is staffing, is it not?
Yeah, the majority, the majority of the cost is always staffing. It's always personnel.
Okay.
Right? And so having the right ratios is always the concern. Now, one of the hard parts about a cold-weather shelter, very honestly, is you're only promising somebody four months' work. Right? And then you're asking them to work odd shifts. And so they're tough positions to fill. And so it's easier to get those positions during the day filled. Right? Those shifts people pick up, and so you don't have to pay a slightly higher rate there.
But it, it's very possible that if this was a year-round shelter, it could cost about half a million a year?
Yes.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay. Now, am I correct in the current budget we've just passed? Isn't, is the, our contribution 90?
No, it was set back to the 30,000 that they always got.
Oh, it was requested at 90? I thought we approved 90. So we're back to 30 for the, the whole thing?
Correct.
Which realistically could be less than what we gave them last year because we gave them last year a certain amount plus the additional 30. So then we went back to 30. So you're, and you're here letting us know that you're short about 122,000?
Correct. But as I told you when I first started,
Yeah.
we got a $10,000 pledge, so I'm 112 short.
All right. So if the town wants to make you whole, so to speak, without any other charitable donations or funding from any other source, we would have to basically increase the contribution by about 70,000 to 80,000. Is that right? Anybody with numbers? What's that? No. Wait, you said that the 30 we're giving you doesn't count towards the family. It's emergency shelter only.
Yeah.
So actually, so you don't show that in your math. I just realized that. So you've raised 62, now 72,000. Correct? Because you added 10?
Correct.
You had 72. The town's contribution would bring that to 102. Am I all right so far?
Yeah.
That's great. So now we're about 82,000 short if we wanted to make them whole. Okay. I'm just assuming that somewhere along the way after this presentation, there's gonna be the discussion of how much more do we want to contribute to, to this operation? So we'd have to know that we're, we would have to probably come up with another 70-plus thousand to completely fund the emergency shelter for those four months in the winter on top of what we've already donated, what we're already contributing. Okay, do you see any other, as you're going into the season, any, what's the Smart Family Foundation? Is that a private organization?
It's a private foundation that we solicited for dollars.
What about you?
What do you mean?
Columbus House as an organization?
That's what we did. Our grant-writing team went after certain dollars specifically to try and fund the project.
Okay. So you don't have a, a separate...
I don't have a slush fund anywhere to...
I wouldn't call it that. I would have been like an operating budget, right?
Unrestricted dollars that would be available. Yeah, there's nothing like that.
Right, so all of the, the facilities you're operating, the programs you're providing, you're getting targeted grants and doing what you have to do?
Absolutely.
And do you foresee anything untapped that you haven't hit yet or you might get?
So we're always asking...
Going into this season?
Yeah, we're always asking. I can't tell you that there's going to be additional dollars coming in. We're even putting pressure at much higher levels, trying to get additional funding.
Well, yeah, I'm not implying, I'm not asking you to predict any, any other successful donations. I was wondering if there were government programs or ongoing things that haven't come to, to fruition yet.
No, everything that is traditional or has been available, we have tapped.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'm good.
Thank you. Moving on to Counselor Tata.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. One question is just in relation to the two sets of slides. So the first, the first presentation we received with our agenda backup says average nightly, average nightly served one.
Yeah.
And then the one tonight says 14. Was that a typo or...
No, I attached an old presentation. We had... Unfortunately, you got a draft. This is the final product that you have, the second one. That is on me. That was user error. And quite frankly, it's embarrassing that for my first time in front of you, I decided to send you the wrong documents.
No, we all make mistakes. No problem. No, we all make mistakes. No problem. But um but but the, I just want to make sure the one, that is not accurate information.
No, that was one of the things when I was preparing and I went and looked at what was sent and it was not a good morning.
Okay, no problem. So um, all right, so it looks like for last year, it was fourteen was the total served according to this slide. Uh, according to your slide, it looks like it's page three.
Yeah.
Fourteen was the total served, but then it also says later fourteen was the average served. So the, those are the correct numbers, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Um, so I'm looking at your, so the total operating costs, we divide that by fourteen. So let's assume that, you know?
Well, it's a fifteen-bed shelter.
Okay.
So just we didn't typically have one opening.
Okay.
Right? And I will tell you, we don't try and hold something open, but it's always good to have a space in case law enforcement needs assistance.
Sure. So but if you divide that, so the total amount served over the season was fourteen. So if you divide your operating cost by fourteen, that's thirteen thousand, one forty-two spent per person.
We do it fifteen beds because that's the capacity.
But you didn't have fifteen, you had fourteen. Okay, I'm just trying to look, I mean, even if we divided by fifteen, so it'll bring that down a little bit. Um. So your operating cost, though, to to help fourteen people was thirteen thousand dollars per person. Um. So just from a, I mean, obviously, none of us wants to see anybody out in the street. I mean, that goes without saying.
Sure.
But we also have to look at taxpayer dollars and if you're, we're spending thirteen thousand dollars per person. I mean, I would almost rather give those people the ten thousand dollars and pay their rent for, you know, several months than than make sure that they have a a bed to sleep in for for a few nights. Um. So I think we just need to look at the, I mean, I hate to say return on investment when we're talking about homeless people because I I don't like to look at it like that, but um you know, there there may be more cost-effective ways for us to deal with this issue than spending that kind of money. I don't know if you want to speak to that.
Well, first, I don't quite understand your math for getting thirteen. I get three.
So a hundred and eighty?
Hundred and eighty-four divided by fifteen divided by four.
So where's it divided by four?
Four months.
Okay, so but but I asked you, is the total amount served was fourteen in twenty twenty-four? You said yes.
Yes, but you're doing it just by humans. I'm doing it by bed availability per month. Because you've got static holding costs for a bed. It's like a hotel that exists.
Okay, but looking at your, so the slide on page three. So whether, if we take aside availability, the actual number of people we're serving in twenty seventeen was seventeen, in twenty eighteen was twenty-seven. So that was a high year.
Sure.
Twenty nineteen was twenty-three. In twenty twenty-three, that was a COVID, so I'm assuming that was the reason for the dip there.
Yeah.
Uh, twenty twenty-one, twelve people served. Twenty twenty-two, fifteen. Twenty-three was fourteen people served and twenty-four was fourteen people served.
Yeah.
Okay, so those are the actual numbers, not availability.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. So you're just dividing by unduplicated individuals.
Right, so if it costs a hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars to run and we're serving fourteen people, then we spent thirteen thousand dollars approximately per person.
So first off, it's not going to be possible to find a facility that's going to rent you a room for four months for the individuals, right? That's just not going to happen. It's also not going to be economical doing it through a hotel. Also, what we're talking about is a population of individuals that have traditionally not been successful in the lease relationship. And without intensive supportive services, we are going to see folks cycle. And so that's why in situations like this, very short term, we try and make something emergency available. That's the problem with emergency. It's always expensive, right? It just is. I wish it wasn't, but it is. And I would just point out fourteen people downtown here outside in the winter would be a big deal. That would light up all of your phones.
Absolutely. Do you know how many of those people are Wallingford or or were prior Wallingford residents?
Again, folks stay as close to home as possible. It depends. We will have people throughout our network in our various shelters. So I can't tell you I'm only going to serve someone because unfortunately, extreme poverty doesn't know town boundaries.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, thank you. Onto Counselor Laffin.
Thank you. Um, and hopefully maybe clearing something up. The the total served, those were in individuals served?
Yeah.
And the, that's different than an average served. Like, we never had twenty-seven people in the homeless shelter at once.
Correct, that would be total individuals over the season.
That's why it was twenty-seven one year and it was fourteen last year.
Correct.
Um, so, you know, basically, you're you're able to, for the cost of one hundred to one hundred and twenty dollars a night per person, per bed, get these people inside, get them food, basic services.
Laundry.
Connection.
Yep.
Giving them human contact um in a, some sort of combination of volunteers, donations, paid, you have utilities and all that other stuff. Um. I'm, obviously, we all got a little burned the last time around.
Sure.
With the operation. So that, I think that's a lot of the hesitancy that that you hear. Um, I want this to work. I think um what you're, what you perform is, the service you provide is vital. And as you said, fourteen people milling around or hanging out on the green or sleeping in the gazebo or whatever is different. Uh, that would be terrible. With a relationship to law enforcement, of course, you you never know if they're going to show up and they need you to take somebody for the night.
That's right.
And you don't know the circumstances. And uh that person very may well be that domestic violence victim that just needs a place to stay. So I I hope we can figure something out um going forward. Um, I don't envy the the challenge that you've accepted by moving across the country to, I hope, I hope it's a mild winter for you because sometimes it's, it's not just for you, but for for the homeless in general.
Yeah.
Um. I know that was, that's probably discombobulated. It it's, I think it's an emotional issue. I think uh what you do for the price point that you do it, um, I think it's fair. What we can participate in will be the discussion, and I know that you work with other community organizations to to make that happen. And um it's, I, you know, they're homeless. It's hard. Are you, are you from Wallingford? Are you from Meriden? Like, I don't know, but maybe somebody from Wallingford, uh, there was somebody in my family that was homeless. And there's a mental health issue that exists with that. And when he was found, the family took him in, back in thirty years later, as an adult, took him back in. And um that lasted for several months, and then one morning he was gone. He left again. So I think the more human contact and and help that we can provide them, um, people in this situation, the better. And I I don't have an answer for you right now on how, but I guess that's your job. So, but thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you, and onto Counselor, onto Counselor Regan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Welcome.
Thank you.
So I am an invested partner in the shelter as far as our participation and matching funds last year.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I'm going to put that aside for a while. If you're coming to us with a future ask, it is reasonable for us to ask the questions. Where did the money go? What's the breakdown of how it was spent? Everything from salaries, operations, food, insurance, snow removal, what have you. And I understand this presentation and and you were not ready to present that. In fact, when asked, you stated that you were not sure of how much, this is paraphrased, was provided by the town of Wallingford. Exactly. Um, was the way that I interpreted the the thirty thousand or somewhere near their uh conversation. So very uncomfortable with that. Um, your predecessor came to us and basically said this is an overflow shelter. Um, we really don't have that regional need here, but Middletown and New Haven and and other parts unknown is is where we're shifting and transferring people. I understand the women and children issue are a separate issue. Um, it's there and we should be paying for whatever that that is. I've got a problem defining your term of local because I think here as Wallingford Town Councilors, we have a totally different definition of that. Um, of the people that we serve. I understand the regional nature of traveling people don't see a border from one town to another. Totally accept that. Um, I'm ready to absolve sins of the past if that's my, if that's my right and give you a fresh start. But we need a lot more detail. We need to know who's being reached out to, how we can participate in such a reaching out in as best we can. We have partners from last year who provided all of the food for the shelter. I don't see them on the list. I don't know who was approached. You know, we have, I I can, and I guess this is more of a statement than than really a question, except for the local part. Um, it will be open this year. We just have to figure out why, in my opinion. Um, and and we'll get a way to get it done, but but that that, we're data-driven. Um, I'm data-driven. That's what we need, I need to 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 make the decisions of how we move forward. Can can you define local as far as Columbus House, county, then Middletown, and and what exactly are our borders?
So first off, I've got to just admit that I come from a county that's bigger than this state. So local, it's interesting. I have neighbors that get grumpy about having to drive fifteen minutes away. There's a different thing here. I am learning. It's much smaller in idea. Local, of course, we would uh want to see whoever we could place from Wallingford, but anybody from in our uh MMW can would be able to be referred in.
So so that's a, pardon for the interruption.
Middletown, Meriden, and Wallingford. That's the big scope.
And every town that touches them?
Can. It could, but the majority of folks come from the larger towns.
So when understanding the Wallingford ask, I would also present what those cities provide as well. You know, as a gauge for us, not to not to better them, but as a gauge for us to completely understand what should a community of forty-five thousand-ish um be supportive of? And 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 those types of things. So I I I think this will be one of a a handful of presentations um as we fine tune this. Um, I know decisions need to be made within the next thirty, forty-five days regarding exact opening dates and 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 closing dates could always be variable based on the weather, of course, but but I think we need a lot more uh communication, conversation and data.
And the thing I will also say, we need some lead time for being able to appropriately hire and train. Right? Because it is a seasonal workforce. Um, I offer you an apology. I was not aware that um financial reporting had not been provided to the council in the past. I can do that for last year. I can give you data on that. That's not a problem. Happy to provide that. You should expect that from us. And so um I will make sure I get that through the chairman so that it can be distributed. Um, any requests like that, it's how we would want to perform as a partner.
Okay, thank you. Onto Counselor Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, good evening. Thank you for coming. Um, couple of questions or or a question and maybe uh an observation. Do you have a handle on, are there similar situations like other towns that have sort of, you know, cold shelter, cold weather shelters, similar to the town where you have a a handle on like what what the town would contribute, like an overall percentage? So for example, you mentioned New Haven, you mentioned Middletown. Do you have an understanding of how much money those municipalities contribute to the shelters or or anecdotally speaking, even if it's not actual math?
Yeah, I uh could not today recite to you what each town provides. I can tell you that their support all varies.
Okay.
Um, and then there is various state support as well.
And yeah, and I, like I said, I didn't expect you to be able to rattle off numbers. I was just curious if you had a handle on it. Um. I I I I appreciate the discussion about it being local, but you know, what's to say that the homeless mother with the child in New Haven isn't from Wallingford and are we paying them for that? So I think when we start trying to ask where people live and they're unhoused, the answer is they don't. They're unhoused. So their their physical address is where they're standing. And so if they're standing here and they're asking for help, I don't think we need to look at like, you know, their ID and say, well, sorry, you're from, you know, you're from Durham, so, you know, it's that way. Not suggesting that that's the implication, but it it kind of sounds like that a little bit. Um, and the other piece too is, I mean, we just had a whole discussion about, you know, giving tax breaks to veterans. If you look at the sort of the demographics and the background of a lot of homeless people, a lot of them are veterans. A lot of unhoused people in New Haven go to West Haven to the VA to get their treatment, and then they go back to being in New Haven. So um I understand money's a concern. I understand that we're the stewards of the tax dollars, but in conversations like this, it's it's slightly squeamish because these are people, to Counselor Fishbein's point, at their, you know, at a point where in their lives where there are no options. And if you've, to Counselor Laffin's point, and I have two experienced family members who are uh homeless and and in distress and and so forth, um, it's it's more than just the individual that it affects. Um, it's not just the community, it's the families, it's everybody. So I I would like to try to find a way to, you know, to make this happen. Um, and so I thank you. Thank you for your time. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Allison.
Thank you. I just wanted to um say hello. Good to be here, see from inside here. Thank you for coming before us today. As you can tell, and I think I had spoken to you um earlier this month, uh, or last month, actually. Um, there is definitely some hesitance on the part of the council just because of past relationships and kind of a a general lack of information from people that have really no bearing on a relationship that we would have with you as the person running this shelter. So I know um this is not an easy conversation, I think, for anyone else to have, especially, you know, see and and for me, you know, seeing your ears and your want to help and also coming from a county that is about half as, I think it might be half as large as the city Connecticut, totally understand. Um, so I understand the concern about people who we would consider local. The thing is, you know, if we didn't have a bed available, one of those cities would take a local resident of ours. Um, and I think it's, you know, it's important to consider that this issue is only kind of, it's only really becoming more prevalent with the growing um mental health concerns. Um, you know, the kind of lack of human connection um that a lot of people are getting. Um, and you know, that can be driven by um the fact that a lot of us don't communicate um outside of our own social groups. Um, it can also be, you know, it's hard for people to ask for help. Um, especially knowing that you have to bear your soul to somebody who you don't know if they are going to consider you worthy of that help. As somebody who has gotten herself in and out of trouble um a few times, you know, um, and also who has had to ask for loans for my parents. um, and also who has had to ask for loans from my parents, um, as a younger person, um, I definitely understand those concerns. Um, I have, you know, done better, but there is not a part of me that ever wants to have that conversation again, and that's with my own parents. I can't imagine having it with a stranger. Um, I can't imagine having it about, you know, my chosen spouse who has had very unpredictable behavior towards me or my children. I can't imagine any of those instances because I haven't experienced it personally, but the small part of me that has experienced trouble that I've had at a very small scale comparatively still understands the shame that comes along with either knowing you've made a mistake or feeling that somebody else is going to feel like you've made a mistake and then not being able to help yourself out of it immediately. So I was one of the councillors in the last budget season who was very hesitant to fully fund the winter part of the shelter. I wanted to make sure that we had somebody that we was representing Columbus House with a a strong positive attitude transparency um and who would be willing to be a better partner to the town. I don't know who the person was before you. It is not my intent to disparage them or their work. I did not, I certainly did not have a relationship with them the way that we are having a relationship right now by talking to each other. Um, so that's certainly not my intent. Um, but I do want to say that hearing the information that uh that you've presented tonight and also, you know, having spoken to you and hearing the passion in your arguments um and and your passion for this work, um, I do have faith that um we could at the very least, get through opening the emergency shelter and then continue the conversation about year-long housing or whatever that looks like in the future. Um, I I but I do think that we are coming to a point, and this is why we wanted to get it on the close agenda, um, where we need to make some decisions around cold weather. I mean, it's only like fifty-five degrees out and by California standards, it would be in purpose. So um I'm I'm just, you know, recognizing we're coming out of hotter weather and while certainly nobody is going to breeze, I guess, um, it is uncomfortable to be outside um in the elements and I wouldn't want our hesitance um to put somebody in that position. So from, in my opinion, I am supportive of this and I am the type of person who would rather give it a try and um see if we make the same decisions. But with a more transparent and a more participative um participatory relationship um between Columbus House and the town, I do believe that we could make positive change um and you know, really provide a stronger impact to this community, if you will, of people um who are essentially displaced from the community. So I appreciate you coming before us tonight. I appreciate your conviction. Um, and, you know, I look forward to hearing more and, you know, continuing the conversation. So nice to meet you again. Thank you.
Thank you. And on to councillor Fishbein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I want to look at page three of your presentation again that you were asked at the shelter history and impact. The last column, positive exit, what does that refer to?
Permanent housing placement.
Okay. So um, which I guess could be the units behind the emergency shelter.
It could be, it could be a lot of places. When it comes to trying to find housing, that's a very different thing. That's anywhere we can find a unit.
Okay, and that that calls for your staff to triage resources to try and get placement?
Correct.
Okay, so can you just, maybe you don't know because you're you're new, but I'm looking at that column twenty twenty-two, which were coming out of the pandemic.
Mm-hmm.
We had fifteen people that you serviced.
Yeah.
And twelve of the fifteen were positive exits. They they got permanent housing. Twenty twenty-four, you had fourteen, which is almost the same number, but zero.
Uh-huh.
What do you attribute that very?
So there can be a lot of things. Sometimes what will happen is that we will have a housing um facility come online. Right? And all of a sudden, we will have available doors and we can make placements. I would, that is subjective on my part. I would have to research how those twelve happened. Um, but when you see a variance like that, I usually ask, what was different in the market? Because something occurred. Right? Something happened with availability or the ability to move people. Um, because you don't typically see huge variances like that. So your question is absolutely appropriate and astute, and I can find out for you.
And it also could be indicative of a decrease in services. Um, you didn't have somebody there who was triaging those individuals into permanent housing. That could be attributable for the very drastic difference. That's basically the time period that we're talking about.
Well, I would say that if you look at that, you find that as an anomaly. If you go two years up, you see more consistency.
Oh, understood.
So there's gonna be a reason for that as opposed to just a change in services, because if you're looking at a five-year spread where there is more consistency than that twelve, right? It's closer to the two or one. Then that tells me something else happened as opposed to service.
Okay. The other thing um that I had learned about the emergency shelter in Wallingford.
Yeah.
Is that um it was a dry shelter.
Uh-huh.
Meaning, at least how I was told, that if somebody presents there and they are inebriated or under the influence of some sort of controlled substance that's not prescribed to them, that they would not be allowed entry. Is that's fair? Is that a fair assessment of at least how the shelter was operating?
I can't speak to was.
Okay, so going forward, what is the intention of the Columbus House with regard to individuals?
The way that I've always operated emergency shelters is that if you show up tanked, but you can keep it together and go sleep it off, go sleep it off. Right? And we'll talk to you when your head's clear in the morning.
Okay, so.
We need to give people the opportunity because um, well, sorry, I interrupted you. I apologize.
And and I interrupted you too. You know, I guess that's um that's an operational decision, right?
Correct.
So I I think the philosophy under the prior regime was that incentivized individuals to try and not do those illicit substances because they knew they had a place they could go to. It was warm that they could sleep. And I, you know.
Addiction's an ugly creature and.
Oh, amen. Yeah.
You know, and it doesn't really pay attention to rules like that.
Agreed.
Right? And I've been sober fourteen years. So I got my, I've had my own little viewing into that room in hell, right? I understand what that's like. So I don't feel a great deal of separation from the people that I serve.
I used to drink a case of beer a day, so, okay?
There you are.
Been there, okay? Um, but that brings me to, you know, the facility there is communal.
Congregate, yes, it is.
It's congregate is the proper word, right?
That's what we call them, congregate shelters.
Yeah, so there's.
And men, five women.
There's beds right next to each other, right?
Roughly, yes.
So if somebody presents um uh in a fashion that they are not appropriate, other individuals that are there are affected in in that
Yes, but then you can make some operational choices as well. You can make sure that the individual's in a bed closest to staff, right? You can establish some rules and guidelines that your behavior is going to dictate if you get to stay. We're giving you this opportunity, right? And so individuals can select themselves out of services, right? Like you don't get to make people afraid, you don't get to be violent. That's just, that's some of the basic rules of society, right? And but um there are ways that you can manage people that are struggling with inebriation.
Okay, but snoring alone can be very disturbing to other individuals when you're living, sleeping in that aspect, right?
So says my wife.
Mine too, right? And that's why I got a sleep app. But you can't throw somebody out of the emergency shelter because
Of snoring?
Sleep sleep apnea. No.
No.
It wouldn't be fair.
Yeah.
But other people are being affected, which brings me to numbers, okay?
Okay.
So what we learned tonight is to operate an emergency shelter in Wallingford for four months, which is um, individuals not able to stay there during the day. It's basically just night.
Un- unless extreme weather is happens and on Sundays they do stay all day.
Okay, but for the for the most.
Majority, no.
Okay.
We don't have that staffing.
So it would cost for the four months a hundred eighty-four thousand dollars, right? Okay, so, you know, last summer, my wife and I had to stay at hotels. We stayed at hotels for just about four months, all over the area, right? So I know they don't charge this, um, but I I used four hundred as my number.
Hmm.
Okay, and if I took fourteen people, which twenty-three, twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four, that was the total number of people that were serviced, right? And I rented them a hotel room for the entirety of the four months, which is actually giving them more services because they can stay there all day long, right? That's only twenty-two thousand four hundred dollars.
Mm-hmm.
Now, if I took your height, which two thousand eighteen was twenty-seven, and I rounded it up to thirty, so let's use thirty, right? The the most that the the shelter has serviced in the last ten years, thirty times four hundred times four is forty-eight thousand dollars. Okay, now remember, we're talking about a hundred eighty-four thousand dollars for four months of reduced service. So let's take it to the extreme. Some have talked about, well, let's let's render this service all year round at your max. Take the thirty, the max, right? Thirty times four hundred times twelve, twelve months of the year is only a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars.
Mm-hmm.
I just rendered a service to the individuals that are homeless for the entire year at a forty thousand dollar savings. So how do I then turn around and consider what is technically not before us here tonight, but by intimation is before us? How do I?
You're saying, how do you weigh that?
Yeah.
How does that make sense? You don't have any staffing in what you're talking about. You're just dropping people off in a room and hoping it goes well. You don't have any food for them. You haven't done any assessment of their medical needs. You're not doing anything about their laundry. You're not working on getting them placed into permanent housing. There's nobody there following up with them regularly. You're gonna have a hotel owner that's gonna be losing his mind and you're gonna have a problem. These are the things that we learned during COVID.
Okay, however, i- if we and we're just having this discussion, you know, if we if we place individuals, we know about those individuals and we have youth in social services, right? And we could have an individual who's a caseworker, who is rendering those services, not all of them. Um, but certainly looking for lo- long-term permanent placement. I don't think it would cost that much.
So industry standard for caseloads for hard-to-serve individuals is seventeen or less. So your average social worker, all in, you're gonna be more than a hundred bills into that.
But the numbers that I'm looking at, I took the maximum amount that you serviced over the last ten years. It's actually double what the trend has been. I've got the money.
Sure. So I'm happy to bring in the budget and show you, go through it line item for line item with the finance committee or whoever would be interested. I have no problem with showing you guys how we're planning on spending the money. It's not exorbitant, it's in line with how we operate facilities, and it's how you can keep people safe and healthy.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, thank you. And we're also the council. Mr. Laffin?
Yeah, so if we put somebody at the Fairfield Inn tonight for a hundred and fifty-nine dollars, a hundred and sixty dollars, and we did it fifteen times, fifteen people, it'd be twenty-four hundred dollars tonight, times seven, times four, times for four months, it's two hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars a year. Without food, without services, without town resources, assessing their needs. That's a lot more money.
Anyone else on the council? Anyone from the public on this topic? Oh, I'm sorry, councillor, uh, go ahead, Chief Buck, and then we'll go to councillor Allison next. Oh, councillor Allison, you're up.
Okay, um, I just wanted to say that um it to using social services, especially in the town, um, is already extremely taxed. I mean, there would essentially have to be more personnel hired um uh in order to facilitate this. So I was I just wanted to comment that it's like, I understand the the notion, it it's just that I think that the um the assumption that they have in there with to do it, if that is what's being made, is um there would have to be some additional hiring and as we know from having these discussions at budget time and all the time kind of um year-round staffing, you know, is the most expensive um part of um our, you know, the most expensive but also the most important part of our uh town, you know, tax role, I guess. Um, it can be very um, you know, once we, and you'd be in her like insurance costs and things like that, and we start looking through, you know, what is being provided and then multiplying that out into the scale of a year-round. While I understand the straight-up housing cost um is, you know, might seem less expensive, um, I do think that, and understanding that this community also tends to be people who, you know, don't necessarily fit into like massive uh, you know, like large society, um, just into whatever situation has been going on. So I think, you know, I'd be cautious about straight-up comparing cost to cost, assuming it's somebody, you know, like me who, you know, generally I could get myself in a situation where I'm I am needing emergency housing. And 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 I'm sure that there are people like me out there, but a lot of the community that is, you know, underserved medically um or with their rental health is is not necessarily the same as somebody who is seeking emergency shelter. Um, so I think we have two different parts of the community that we're serving here and that we're looking to serve here. So um, I think it's it it, I just wanted to say into, you know, or encourage people to be cautious about comparing, you know, what happens with ourselves um in our own situations uh without understanding, you know, the sort of traveling or transient or unhomed community um so in general. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Onto Chief Buck.
Good evening. Thank you, Chairman. Jim Buck, Emergency Management Director, in addition to Fire Chief. Mr. Gil, it's nice to meet you. And uh I'm really glad you're here in October as a representative from Columbus House. Um, I think you found out tonight, you have a very compassionate council and mayor. Um, they also require accountability. And I've learned that in my year here, and um I think you're you're seeing some of that tonight. So um you you know, clearly you're not responsible for the mistakes of predecessors, but I think where we go from here forward, uh, the fact that you're here in October and discussing this is very important. Um, so I have a few comments. I'll try to run through them quickly. Um, obviously, I was quite angry last year, along with many of you on the council, as well as uh, I don't want to characterize everyone, but it it was very upsetting to hear that the historical that the historical assistance that was provided in the past, uh, wasn't coming. And, um, it required a lot of work. Um, I don't know if he didn't really elaborate on it, but councillor Regan himself, uh, through his foundation, put in a, a lot to donate to, uh, ensure that the, uh, shelter operated last year. Um, you, you know, one thing I haven't heard really discussed tonight is when the unhoused are not assisted with shelter, they become part of the 911 system. And I think that's an important thing to consider when you talk about costs and we're looking at costs of providing this service. There's a, there's a true cost to the individuals and to this community as a whole when that happens. So ensuring this shelter runs and is, and is up and running and optimal is really important, uh, for the, for the health of the town. Um, in 2016 is really when this partnership began with Wallingford Emergency Shelter and Columbus House. It was previously run through volunteers prior to that. Um, I don't know how much you're aware of really what was kind of deeded over to Columbus House here to, to make things happen, but I, I think that that's being lost in, in some of these discussions. And I think it's really important, and I'm glad you're here, but I think it's really important you hear this, that Wallingford gave, Wallingford came to the table and said, this, this issue is so important, we're ensuring Columbus House is going to manage this. And then that didn't happen. And we were being told it wasn't going to happen last year. Conversely, a facility like the Margaret Alkeith Community Center in Hamden, which I know very well, which is a, a town entity, that, that was opened by Columbus House, and that was running. And I understand there's need, and I understand there's evaluation of where those assets need to go. But that's really upsetting when a municipality came to the table with funding and with the facility, yet the, the assistance wasn't there. So I think it's important you understand that history and kind of where people are with that. Um, is Abraham's Tent still a component of this project? Or is it gonna be fully staffed and no, no more volunteer?
No, it's gonna be fully staffed.
Okay. Is Abraham's Tent-
Abraham's Tent model is not being utilized now. It struggled to get back on its feet after COVID.
Okay, that's fair. I, years ago, I assisted with congregation in Israel and part of what we did there.
It was very successful through a number of congregations for a very long time.
Yeah.
And then there were many, many members of the congregations that quite simply aged out of being able to do the assistance. And they, we were never able to recruit younger members into that program.
Okay. Um, all right, so I just want to wrap up with a couple of things, because I think a whole lot more needs to still happen. Uh, the, the presentation was a good start. Um, it sounds like there's a whole lot more that needs to come. Um, you know, I want to make sure that the, uh, Health Director, Vanessa Batista, is a, a part of this, our YSS Director, we, you know, Youth and Social Services, Mandy Miranda. Um, so, um, I don't know if you've had a chance to connect with them, but certainly want to. Um, our Deputy Emergency Management Director, Len Gersha, is a, is an amazing individual, tireless worker, and, uh, we get, you know, a lot of people in a room, a lot of great things can happen. Um, as it relates to funding, the last thing I'll really, uh, ask is, you, you mentioned a little bit about state funding before. I, I think the solution here is some type of funding mix that includes state funding, which you mentioned is accessible, it's in some way. The municipality, which I, I think the, I think the municipal funding, I was disappointed at budget time when it was taken out. I think, I think you all did the absolute right thing, because this now brought this question to the table and demanded accountability. So that's good, and I'm hoping that some funding can come through. And then that donor mix. So you, so you've got donors, you, you know, I don't know how well, how much you've communicated with United Way, if they're a big part of that number or not, but I know they're, they're a really big supporter here. I know there's financial institutions that are looking to support, so hopefully that's all been a part of it. But I think that funding mix needs to be a mix. It can't just be overweight on donations only.
Yeah, we have been working with a number of groups to try and find the funding for it. And yes, I spent a good deal of time with the leadership in United Way. Um, this is a process. And the only thing I'll say is I'm responsible for what happened in the past. I didn't do it, but I took the job. So it's mine to make right, and so I'm working on that. And the other piece is, is something, so I was raised on a ranch, and I was taught simple things. This is one of the things I was taught. You can't paint, change the past, you can't change the truth, and you can't change another person. So I ain't gonna try and change any of those things, but I am gonna try and make the future better. And I promise you that.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Miss?
Um, Kathy Hunter, North Orchard Street. Um, a couple of questions. First of all, with the, with regard to volunteers, are there any volunteers that are being expected in the mix of people helping to staff the emergency shelter, or is that not happening?
So volunteers not for staffing, but potentially for assistance with meals and other fortunes of the, portions of the service?
Okay. Um, my family used to bring Christmas stockings to the emergency shelter some years ago, like socks with, like, presents in them. And at some point, that was cut off. And it seemed like it was when, I can't speak to this exactly, but I think it was when Columbus House came in. So in terms of volunteer support, you might want to put the call out now and start building relationships with people who might be interested in being of service to make ham sandwiches. It's not gonna help much with the, the budget, but it might help build some equity in the community other ways.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public? Miss?
Hello, I'm Kelly Craft. I am the MMW CAN director, so I know we mentioned MMW CAN a couple of times. Um, we are the regional oversight for the entry and exit of homelessness. So a lot of the questions, I can actually, like, team up with Lewis and actually give you them um, at a later time. I'm not gonna bore you with that. I'm just going to say, while we do have state funding, it is incredibly limited. Um, we are operating, while we have donated to the West Shelter, we have, we also have to fund our Middletown and our Mer- Meriden shelters that operate at a little higher capacity. We are the lowest funded, um, can in the state, so therefore, we get the, um, we have the smallest numbers, we have the smallest funding. So it is a struggle. We work with our partners, we work with our municipalities to try to gain as much funding in meetings like this. And when we look at it, it's, we're in Connecticut, we're in freezing winters. The money really does come down to life and death. Um, we have several people who, um, have had frostbite and who have died in MMW in the past couple of years. So when you, you think about funding this, it really does come down to life and death. Um, and when we think of $90,000, is that worth a life? And I don't think it is. Um, so that, that's all I have. But if you ever want to talk to me about your numbers, I would be more than happy to connect after.
Thank you very much. Sir?
Good evening. Uh, my name is Sean Reynolds. I didn't plan on speaking with you this evening regarding the Columbus House, but I served 25 years on the city New Haven Fire Department. And, um, the Columbus House, we were there constantly, on a daily basis, night, days, sometimes three, four times a shift, a 10-hour or 14-hour night. To Mr. Fishbine, you asked about the shelter being a dry shelter. It was my experience in the fire department side that you were not allowed in that shelter under the influence of any drug or alcohol. Um, just, I don't know, just, I don't know if that will help you out in, you know, housing, uh, people that are homeless. But, um, like the Fire Chief did say, there is another cost to, you know, denying somebody, um, shelter. And most of the calls, a large majority of the calls that we went on were for people that were, had left for the day, they come back in the evening, and they, I mean, there was 586 Boulevard, 645 Grand Avenue, 232 Cedar Street, and the line of people was long. So, you know, uh, people, uh, need help, and, uh, um, it's disappointing when you can't provide it. Um, and ultimately, in the end, they spend the night at the, uh, hospital. And, uh, so I just wanted to let you know that, about the, uh, policy of being under the influence. And I don't know if you spoke to anybody at the facility there in New Haven, uh, since you're the CEO here. Um, the, I, I, I attended many fundraisers for, um, the Columbus House. Um, and, um, they raised money, so I don't know if that's something they could do here in town.
So just to clarify, I'm CEO of all, of Columbus House, and I'm actually based out of New Haven.
Okay.
I took Allison's job.
Okay.
She, she's over at Yale now.
Well, you, you definitely have your hands full.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Bringing it back to the council. Councillor Fishbine?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, you know, one of the things I learned on the tour that I was speaking about before is about socks. And, um, I would hope that, um, because I, I learned that that's probably the most important clothing item to somebody who's homeless, and, um, so I would hope that if and when you're up and running here in Wallingford, that, um, you take donations of socks, um, for those individuals. Um, one of the things that, can't, I can't read my own note. Uh, oh, that's right. I thought you said before that Wallingford is basically an overflow shelter.
No, someone else said that.
Okay. So do you deny that? Or I mean, do you differ with that characterization?
No, I'd say it's a shelter based in Wallingford that, uh, also accepts people from the region. I wouldn't call it overflow. Like, if, you know, Middletown fills up, we're gonna ship everybody to Wallingford. That's not the way it works.
Okay. Do you have data that would show us the, the number of people that, like, resided in Wallingford that are, that used the, the emergency shelter or that were transported?
So part of that gets really tricky, because people will tell you, like, when you say where you're from, sometimes it depends on where they were sleeping the night before.
Yeah, understood. No, because they're homeless, right?
Yeah, so it gets rea- it gets really tricky to tie down, right? What's, what's your town of origin? Right? That's hard. Now, um, I can try and find out. Uh, I don't know that we, we can't dig that out, can we, Kelly?
Yes and no, it's if it's captured.
Yeah.
Well, because, and the reason why I, the reason why I asked the question is, we talked about, um, we've been talking about sources of funding and, you know, state, town of Wallingford, private donations, but if, let's say, 80% of the emergency shelter here in Wallingford is overflow from Hamden, then maybe Hamden should be kicking something in too. I'm just throwing that out there.
Yeah, I will tell you that that's not, it's not an overflow shelter.
Okay.
It's a shelter that's here.
The other piece of data, and I do give credit to councillor Laffin, I, I think he is correct on, on his calculation. But the problem that we have in the data is, we know, let's just say in 2024, that 14 people were serviced. We know that none of them got to permanent housing. But we don't know how many days they were serviced, right? So, you know, I, we can't tell from this, were they there for four months? Were they there for one day?
Yeah.
You're gonna put them down if they were down there for one day as one of the 14.
Yeah, so what I can do is I can get you utilization records, and I can report on that to you.
That would be helpful in my calculation as far as the, the balance of, of needs.
Sure.
So I would appreciate that. And that's all I had. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Uh, councillor Carmody?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, good evening, and thank you for your presentation tonight. Um, I really, I just wanted to follow up on, on something councillor Regan said. What is the timeline that you're looking for a commitment from our town, um, to participate in funding?
So this is coming up on the timeframe when we need to start hiring, right? Now, what I heard, and I'm not trying to put words in anybody's mouth up on the dais, but that you want to see this open and that we will figure it out. I can instruct my staff to proceed with hiring, and we can start spending the money that we've raised. But there has to be the understanding that there's just a finite amount of money that we have to. And so if this conversation needs to continue, that's the wrong way. This conversation needs to continue, and you guys need some additional information to feel secure in this relationship. I just need a commitment that we will be working it out eventually in some manner.
So I, I guess this question might be for you, Mr. Chairman. When do you think we can have this on the agenda again? Because we are talking about the most vulnerable members of our society. And so I, I think the Columbus House has owed a, a decision, and, and we should make a decision sometime very soon.
Yeah, I mean, we have a meeting in two weeks. Does that give you ample time? Could you have the information to us in a week? Or we could push it to the first meeting in November?
No, I should be able to have the information to you in a week.
Okay.
So let's just recap. So I'm being asked for, um, budget and spending reports from the past year, correct, Mr. Regan? And also utilization records of the facility. Those are the two items that you guys would like to see. Is that fair?
Yes, to my recollection, yes.
Okay. I just don't want to disappoint.
Okay, perfect. Uh, so then, um, I'm sorry.
No, I'm also, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, councillor Carmody. Uh, so then we will see you in two weeks, um, and it will be in 3:15, upstairs on the third floor.
Oh, there's another room. Okay, fair enough. I will ask somebody, somebody showed me this place to be going, so.
Well, thank you very much for your time. We really appreciate the presentation.
Thank you so much for your time.
All right, onto item 10, which is Consider An Approved Resolution To Participate In Sustainable Connecticut. And this is from the mayor's office.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman. We have our, uh, grants coordinator from program planning here, Sheila Drevis Cosgrove. Um, and she is actually going to lead the discussion on this for your consideration. So, Sheila?
Good evening. Good evening. Can, am I on? Okay. Yes. Hello. Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for inviting me tonight. Um, yes, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask if you've received some information that I provided. Um, one was a memo, uh, and the flyer, a brochure from Connecticut, Sustainable Connecticut's, uh, website. And I'm gonna start with the basics. I don't know how familiar you all are with the program. It's been around, um, since 2017. It's, um, it, it, it was formed by, um, through towns in a partnership with CCM, some nonprofits, businesses. The Eastern, uh, Connecticut State University coordinated the program development uh, with support from three foundations. Um, it is a program that provides a model to towns, municipalities, um, to help them plan for initiatives and programs, um, that are municipal-based, um, and some of the things that we already do, which is wonderful. So some of the things we already do can count towards, um, a certification. So that's the basics. Um, I'll just go into what's required. You would have received a resolution, so that's why we're here tonight, um, to have you review and discuss the resolution, um, for the town to register in the program. There, um, let me just say that there is, the town, uh, takes the registration, it submits it with the resolution, and the passes, uh, excuse me, the passage of the resolution does not commit your, or our municipality to certify any specific action in any given year. So it's completely voluntary. It's, there is no cost to the town, um, and it's volunteer-based. So a committee would be formed, the size of which is completely up to the mayor or the legislative body. And there's a liaison. And there's a liaison and the mayor has asked me to, as if you received my memo, if I would accept, um, the position of serving as liaison or contact person to, from the town to the state and also to the committee with, in conjunction with working with the mayor and the mayor's, um, aide, administrative aide Cory Haas. So I'm, I'm here, a little history on that, on how this all came about. It was a conversation we started to have two years ago. The mayor is new. I'm new. I started in twenty 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 three, November. I was hired as the full-time grant coordinator. And I work in program planning, which is appropriate in a lot of ways. My background is community development and economic development. I've worked over twenty-five years in that field as a grant administrator. But also with some leanings towards, um, energy efficiency, uh, involvement in facility, um, improvements through my previous job. Um, one of which, um, was CDBG administrator for the city of Milford and the town of Fairfield. The grant portion of this, um, the conversation went like this. We're looking at different grants and one of the things that pops up in my mind is how can I, how can I bring to fruition something that a department head has asked me about or the mayor has asked me about? Um, whether big or small. And so I think about the connections between certain, what's, what's available. Not just state and federal, because you have to be creative. Um, so that was one of the things, that's how this came, kind of came about. Then I had an intern, um, through, this was a practice that predates me. Um, and, um, it was one of, they were seniors that came to work. And one of them researched this program and we brought it to the department heads. We got a lot of feedback from them. Um, basically they love the program, but they can't do it. So it's, um, now at the point where we're thinking about how helpful a committee of volunteers would be to kind of bring forth, um, some of these initiatives, new or existing, such as Adopt a Road. Um, we also help with the hazmat, um, volunteer, um, program. There's several programs that we already do that we could rotate volunteers through. So those are some ideas. I, I hope that's enough background. If, but if it isn't, please, you know, feel free to ask me any questions you would like.
Okay, questions from the council then, starting with councillor Fishbine?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I'm looking at the website for this organization. And it says Sustainable CT provides a shared vision and action roadmap. Practical tools, multiple benefits and collaborative spirit to build a thriving Connecticut for all residents today and tomorrow. So what does the administration see in our town that is so wrong that we need to rely upon someone else to provide the roadmap?
If I may?
Sure.
Um, I don't see that there's something wrong. What I do see is that we can get credit for a lot of the stuff we're already doing or stuff that, um, is just, i- is good for our economy to just, uh, add this as a badge. So some of the things you can do is, uh, inventory and promote local products and services. Uh, provide resources and supports to local businesses. We do a lot with our watershed, create a watershed management plan. There's a lot of this stuff that, uh, we're going to check boxes on anyway as we go into, uh, planning, our, our plan of conservation and development that needs to be redone. So this is just, it's checking boxes on a lot of stuff that we do anyway.
As the plan and conservation and development, I'll take the John Laterno track on that because we've done very little that was in our plan of conservation and development. I was on that committee. Um, the seventy thousand dollars that we spent last time, probably going to be a hundred thousand dollars this time, we should just take the same document that we issued last time and, and reissued it. But if we're doing most of this already, why do we need to, to glom onto this group to say that we are following their roadmap?
Okay, so it's a roadmap. It's a point of reference for planning. And it, it allows a volunteer group to provide input that's not being provided at this point in time.
So can you give me an example? I mean, because we talk about, we just talk about the emergency shelter, right, for, for an hour. So i- is the emergency shelter something that this volunteer group would be opining on?
Actually, it is.
Okay, um, but.
So, so as the mayor mentioned, there are several things that can be done. But as far as the emergency, so, so I guess what we, what we, what we view, what we're, are, um, are, are, what's the word? Uh, goal, for lack of better words, is to have a committee with experts and skills in different areas. Kind of an advisory committee that's not necessarily a board and commission. And they work in, in concert with the town to provide input and implement things the town is interested in doing that, that A, go along with the goals of the town and B, have meet, you know, certification is really not the point, but it, you can get a certified. You can get a bronze. You can't, you know, you can certify. It, it provides people a voice and to provide their thoughts and, and use their interests and expertise towards the town they want to participate in, in living in and, and, and do they want to make it better? I don't think people look at volunteerism from that perspective. I think they look at it from, I'm interested in doing this and want to help. I have something to, to provide. I have something to give. I have a skill. Um, so one of the things that, um, yes, these actions have evolved actually through the years. Um, in putting a better, closer eye on it this, this afternoon, I, the health efficiency and diverse housing. Is that it? No, I'm sorry. Number twelve, effective compassionate homelessness prevention. There, I ticked off all four of the item, action items in there. Um, it takes, um, so collect and share homeless data, homelessness data, you know. I've worked with homeless shelters, um, you know, it's through the past, my two jobs, with the two towns I worked in. And, um, Columbia, Columbus House, Columbus House is, you know, they don't have the staff to do things like that. Somebody could come in and help, you know, help them with that legwork. That could be something the town could contribute on a volunteer basis. It doesn't cost anybody anything except somebody's interest in, in assisting.
So, so we ran into a, uh, so now that scenario, you have a private entity that is a nonprofit. And we empower whomever on this, this local sustainable group to review their records and without their assent for the purposes of data gathering and reporting to us? I'm just, I'm just trying to find a need because, you know, we have volunteerism, we have planning and zoning. We have, you know, we just talked, as I said, we talked about the emergency shelter for an hour. Residents of our town came to the microphones and, and told us what they thought about it. Um, I'm just trying to find a need here. And, and I just, I haven't, and just that, you know, I, we didn't get the brochure. I know I didn't get it. Um, all we got as far as backup is the piece of, um, this, it has a header, Sustainable CT. And then it says Sustainable CT Resolution and we got the resolution. So that's, that's all that's in our pa- packet. If I'm wrong, please correct me. Um, I'm being told by the chairman that that is correct. So that brochure that you're looking at, at least I haven't seen. All I've had the opportunity to do is to look at their website.
Yeah.
You know, Adopt a Road, we've done Adopt a Road, um, uh, years ago. Um, I remember Tully's Road was, was.
We still do it.
Okay, so, you know, maybe we don't advertise it enough. Maybe we don't have enough people that want to volunteer for it. But, you know, you talked about specialists being on this group also. You know, people that have, uh, knowledge in a particular area, you know, that's difficult to fill, um, uh, on a group like this. And it, it becomes another layer of, um, bureaucracy, so to speak. And what, you know, we ran into this with the building, uh, committee that we had two years ago that, um, is no longer that, you know, we created group. Some of those individuals had expertise in, in building and construction and that kind of stuff. And it sort of went sideways. Um, so we don't have that, that group anymore for whatever reason.
Yes, so this group would serve a purpose for the, um, intent that it was put towards them. The, the project that was put in front of them, whatever it might be in, in this realm of actions. And that's yet to be determined, so.
So who would determine those projects?
It would come, it would be in combination with the, the volunteer committee who would be looking at the act, the group of actions, so the twelve actions and the individual points underneath it. The mayor's office, the council, the department heads. Uh, I would act as a coordinator on that, uh, from that perspective to be sure that we were, you know, not, uh, that we were staying within those, uh, parameters.
So you, my impression is that the group takes the roadmap that comes from the state, the group unilaterally.
This is an estate program.
Well, it, it's, where do they get their money from?
Foundations.
Pro- only private foundations?
Universities.
Okay. It's a circle.
I know it says CT on it.
It's a circle. But anyway, um, my understanding was that the organization, the group, takes the roadmap that's issued by whomever. And they unilaterally determine what projects they want to work on in the municipality. And we are in effect empowering them to do that unilateral action. Am I wrong?
So if I understand your question, you're, you're asking me if the committee will take on a action on their own and we will allow them to do that?
So long as it meets the roadmap that, that is issued by whomever and, and is modified by whomever.
I think there'll be a lot more discussion and it will be, it will be, um, a lot slower process than that. I think it, um, no, I, I would say that they will not be working independently.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, thank you. On to councillor Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, thank you for coming. Uh, I'm looking at the website and the community match fund process. I'm in the right area, right? And if I'm understanding this correctly, that the matching grant usually comes with a crowdfunding campaign, um, up to six thousand dollars per project, right? Okay. And so I'm looking at the flip book and, um, I, I, I can't see why we wouldn't do this. Um, we used to hear all the time that we don't apply for grants. These are all small grants that are, that are matched. So the, the people who are doing these projects actually have to initiate the projects, raise their own funds, and then they're matched by this, if I'm understanding this process correctly. And most of these projects look like they're e- either aimed at, you know, like community-wide stuff or kids uh, or agriculture. And, you know, we probably wouldn't mind having some of that money. So I, I have, I have no problems with this. I, I, I don't, I don't feel that there's a back door into anything here. I think that this is basically us just saying, yeah, we'll be a part of this. And then as a, as a perk of our membership, we get to apply for this money. And so, yeah, no, I, I, I'm, I, you know, it's, it seems like a pretty, pretty good idea. So, thank you.
Uh, thank you. On to councillor Laughlin.
Thank you. Um, sorry if, if I got lost in the, in the opening explanation. Can you or the, maybe the mayor explain or, or walk me or us through? How did this kind of come about or to our attention? Like what kind of birthed this concept or belonging to this to us?
Very early in this administration, I actually got an email and started a conversation with Sheila, um, about what this program entails and what it can do for us. Um, and it, it, uh, it provides us with a community designation that addresses sustainability. And Sheila was talking about, um, the homelessness discussion that we had tonight. And one of the elements that you get as part of your score is to provide or mobilize resources to address homelessness. Well, isn't that what we were just talking about tonight? Um, so like I said, this is stuff that we are looking to do anyway. Um, and I think it gives us a positive designation as a community. There's a hundred and thirty-nine towns in Connecticut that are already participating in this.
Oh, it's, okay, um, that's all good. So did, um, did CT, did Sustainable CT email us and then ask if like, hey, do you want to participate in this? Like, do you want to get the certification or?
It was not such a specific solicitation. It was an informative email.
Okay.
Early on, somehow they got the mayor's email, even though it was brand new.
Yeah.
And here we are.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
To answer part of that question is they work with COGS as well. So they're, you know, collaborative and they're partnering. And so that, most municipalities get it. They work with, you know, they receive information. I'm, I signed up to, sometimes I go to their workshops to hear what topic they're talking about. Um, I get their newsletters. I think the mayor probably gets their newsletters too at this point. It's pretty common, um, like you said, a hundred and thirty-nine towns in Connecticut are registered. Um, have actually, sixty five, sixty-seven have actually certified. And, um, in, in New Haven County, eighty-five percent of the towns participate at the moment. The funding is a good point. That's one of the things that, you know, he gravitated towards, the mayor gravitated towards. Um, and I agreed. It also, uh, provides, um, an aspect of, um, newness in, uh, from a, from a funding perspective. Um, openness to have, uh, groups working towards, um, community-oriented projects and initiatives. Not that, not that Wallingford's not an amazing town that, um, has numerous volunteer groups. Um, it's quite commendable. And I think it would just be a nice addition if, if we're looking at it from a personal standpoint. Um, and, uh, but yes, it would, it would put us in a desirable position for a lot of perspectives, economy included, you know, local, local businesses, local economy. Um, the crowdsourcing funding option is, um, finding a project that, you know, people want to do on their own. That can be combined with other project, other funding, like the funding that the, um, Connecticut Main Street Center offers, which were a part, were actually a, um, the town is a member only through our COG, but it's a great organization. But it would open up, if you can combine those things. So it's, it has a kind of a duplicating effect sometimes for, for funding.
Okay, any other questions on this item? Uh, going to the public, any public comment? Sir?
Good evening. Good evening again. My name is Sean Reynolds.
My name is Sean Reynolds. Um, and that's, the reason I'm here this evening is to talk about, uh, Sustainable Connecticut. And I'm in an objection to joining this organization. I'm just going to summarize in the email that I sent to Counselor Fishbein. Before I do that, I did receive an email from She- Sheila. Um, over the course of the last couple of years, I met with the mayor and Sheila about the Adopt a Road program in town. So, anyway, I'm going to summarize with what I wrote to Mr. Fishbein. I says, hi, my name is Sean Patrick Reynolds, 314 North Airline Road. I am writing you this evening regarding the town council meeting, October 14th, under Sustainable Connecticut line item number 10. Here we are. Several months ago, I met with Mayor Savoni regarding the Adopt a Road program and the amount of roadside litter and that our town and most communities are experiencing. I also met and spoke to Sheila Dravis Cosgrove regarding the same issue. Over the last five years, my wife and I have taken it upon ourselves to dedicate an hour or two to pick up roadside trash using the supplies from program planning. In my meeting with Mayor Savoni, I had expressed interest in expanding the Adopt a Road program. He was very receptive to this. Uh, fast forward several months, here we are. I received an email from Sheila regarding, regarding joining the Sustainable Connecticut program. So I was new to me, I never heard of Sustainable Connecticut. I went on the webpage and I said, as a conservative, I don't feel the town should be entering or even joining another bureaucratic organization. I don't think Wallingford needs to be part of an organization that has a board of directors that don't live here, have a political agenda, social justice, equality, and climate change. I express interest in expanding the Adopt a Road program in hopes to get more community engagement, better advertisement, business community involvement, utilization of liquor redemption reimbursement to the town to accomplish the task. I said, uh, my feeling is to keep the state out of our affairs. We can expand the Adopt a Road and keep the Linnery Trail clean without the involvement of Sustainable Connecticut program. And, you know, Mayor Savoni, um, um, was very receptive to me and my concerns and Sheila as well. Um, I, but I think we can handle this without, um, getting involved with this organization. And I just summarized a few things from the Sustainable Connecticut. I mean, they have 16 board of directors. I don't know who has 16 board of directors. A program staff of 10. They have an equity coach. What on earth an equity coach is, is beyond me. There's four of them. That makes up 30 people. Okay? They also have a fellow program, which is probably, from my understanding, a student, which I don't know what a student is going to do about helping us research and document sustainability in our town. Now, if you look on the webpage, it talks about, um, pollinating, pollinators. Talks about community gardens, building community gardens. We have community garden. We have farms with plenty of pollinators. The, the latest thing on there, which I find quite disturbing, is they're going to talk about electrification of school buses. Now, when you talk about electrifying school buses, there's a cost to that, a big cost, that they're going to pass on with this initiative that they're going to talk about here in Sustainable Connecticut. When you talk about money that's going to be added to the Board of Education budget, when you tell us this town that we need to have electric school buses. In the end, um, you know, when we talked about, you, everyone talked about the Columbus House and, uh, the amount of money that it costs. I, I much rather see money, um, you know, when you talk about the cost that's going to come to our budget, um, go into helping a homeless person than get into the bureaucracy of people who don't live in this town. They, I mean, what, what happens in Mansfield, Connecticut is not what happens here. I, I think we do a great job here. We have done a great job here. This town's a great town. I'm thankful Mayor Savoni is our mayor. And, um, I, I'm just in a disagreement with you on this. And, um, and, and when we talk, I mean, essentially, essentially, this is, um, like a climate change initiative, this organization. If you look at the, there, there's a lot of fluff in the mission statement. I, I mean, I, I'll, I'll quickly read you the mission statement. I mean, just part of it. I, it, it, to me, it talks about nothing, really. It says, it says, uh, "To foster inclusive, resilient, vibrant Connecticut municipalities that provide opportunities for all to thrive by providing a menu of sustainable actions that local economies support equity, respect finite capacity of the environment, offering technical assistance to help advance sustainability initiatives and recognize and certify municipalities for their achievements." But, I mean, it's a lot of fluff, in my opinion. Um, I, I, I don't know what we need to be certified on. And when we talk about sustainability and the environment, I'm going to bring up something really quick that is going to cost this town and every municipality a lot of money. The fire chief is not here right now, but the fire apparatus, for an example, has a diesel engine. That diesel engine has been redesigned to meet standards set by the federal government. The engine is bi- bigger. It has a, runs from a 12-volt system now to a 48-volt system. It increases the price of fire apparatus by $100,000. Now, when the town is looking to buy a fire truck that costs $750,000 next year, it's going to be $850,000. The truck's going to be bigger, it's going to be longer, the interior is going to be, um, um, less. So we, you know, we can only stretch a dollar so much. So, you know, we talk about the environment, we all love the environment. But my intention was to expand the Adopt a Road program. And ultimately, you need boots on the ground. You, you can talk, you can talk about sustainability, equity, all that kind of stuff. You need boots on the ground, you need people to do the work. And I want to see the Adopt a Road program expanded. I'd like to see the town residents more participation. And I, you know, now's the time to do it, the spring and the fall. And I don't think there's anything on the schedule this year or this season. So we're missing out again on that. But, um, I, I just want to see the, uh, essentially, the town ca, uh, keep doing, doing what we're doing, engage the public better, get our, our businesses on board and keep the state of Connecticut bureaucracy out of this town. And thank you for allowing me to speak.
All right, Madam Clerk, will you kindly call the roll?
Allenson?
Yes.
Harmonde?
Yes.
Fishbein?
No.
Laffin?
Wait, hang on just one second. You know what, the vice chair is correct, there, there has been no, no motion. This was a discussion item. So first we need a motion to, uh...
Adopt the resolution? So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
All right, seconded by Allenson? Okay, I'm sorry, um, now, Madam Clerk, will you kindly call the roll on the motion? Yes, please.
Allenson?
Yes, please.
Harmonde?
Yes.
Fishbein?
No.
Laffin?
No.
Regan?
No.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Tada?
No.
Testa?
Yes.
Maron?
Uh, I vote no and the motion fails.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much. Onto item 11. Uh, discussion of possible action regarding the possibility of the town setting up a system to protect lawful owners of property from mortgage and deed fraud. Counselor Fishbein?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I was contacted by a resident, uh, it was the day I sent this email, October 2nd. Um, he lives over in Yalesville and he happened to find out that somebody put a mortgage on his property. And upon review, I see you nodding, you might know about this one. Yeah, um, it, it looked like, well, it had a notary stamp, uh, from South Carolina. And the guy called me and he said, I've never been in South Carolina. Um, it's a fraud. And it just so happens that I happened to read the Record Journal that day and it's in the, the backup. Um, and there was an article about this mortgage and deed fraud in Connecticut. Um, you know, our homes are one of the most expensive purchases that we may ever make in our life. And for you to go to sell your home and find out that you've got this mortgage, you can't do any, I mean, it's there, it's going to prevent your sale of your home. Um, you can't contact the individual to get a payoff. Um, there was no way to, to reach these people. Um, so, I mean, legally, you could bring a quiet title action, you know, which I, I talked to them about. But, um, the article from the Record Journal indicated that there's a couple of senators up in Hartford that are looking at this, but that some towns, um, and it says, um, in particular, Beacon Falls, Bethany, Hamden, Nogatuck offer fraud alert systems. Um, and the purpose of putting it on the agenda was to talk about, um, I guess, Janice, if you know anything about these things, can we do it?
Well, I, I went on one of the town's websites. So, I mean, it's, it's a little deceptive to call it a fraud alert. I mean, it is an alert system, so it looks like. I couldn't get far because you actually have to register in there. So it's a notification. So you fill out that you want notification if something happens to your land records, records involving your property. And I'm assuming it's all electronic. I don't know how manually the town clerk's office has to be involved, but to have, it will tell the property owner that something is now on the land record. So it doesn't prevent it from happening because the town clerk's legally obligated to take the document in, but it would give a notification when it happens.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that's all, I, I agree, that's all you can do. But at least, you know, because this particular resident, it just so happens that it went on there like three months ago, they, they sort of got lucky in the, as far as the time period. But, you know, if they recorded it today and it's 10 years later and the thing is just sitting there.
Right.
You know, it becomes even more difficult.
I just don't know how it works in terms of, so it look like, so you register electronically. I don't know if it's all done through the internet in terms of, I don't know whether it obligates the town clerk's office to do something themselves or it just happens when you register something in the system and you put it into your system that somehow that triggers it. I don't know how that far goes.
So, I mean, I just, if we could look into that and just see what we possibly could do here and the costs, you know, because now, like, our land records are hooked up to Vision, right? So it might be something with, with Vision, um, that once they get the electronic, you know, maybe that's part of the process also.
Yeah, like I said, I couldn't get pa, you have to actually fill it out to get past it. So, um, we'd have to inquire of the towns that have it.
Yeah, so, um, I, I don't know what, what we need to do to go forward with this. Um, is that enough? I mean...
I, yeah, I think that's enough. So we can look to see, you know, what the programs are and then we'd have to talk to, I'm assuming there's, it's an IT question too, so we'd have to report back.
So, um, Mr. Chairman, can I just ask that we, um, I won't be at the next meeting, but, um, I have no problem if you talk about it at the next meeting. We could just not lose sight of this because this is very troubling.
Certainly.
That's all I have, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, anyone else on this topic? Anyone from the public? All right, thank you very much. Moving on to item 12, discussion of the basketball courts at Dulittle Park. Uh, Counselors Reynolds, Carbone, and Testa, who would like to go first? Counselor Reynolds?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, seeing that it's 5 after 10. Uh, so, first of all, I, I'll just read what I wrote. Um, first, I wanted to thank Attorney Small and also Comptroller Sina for, uh, providing both the warranty, other information, as well as supportive information that was provided in the backup. So I appreciate the response to my emails. Um, I want to stress that the intent of this agenda item is to dis, is to start a discussion about the basketball courts at Dulittle Park and what can be done to address some of the issues that have been brought to us, uh, by the public on multiple occasions. So, I have no interest in litigating who should be blamed or who did what or how did it happen. What I'm, I'm also not interested in trying to tell department heads how to do their jobs, even though there are no department heads right now that would answer for any of this stuff. Um, I don't pretend to be an expert in any of the areas that our department heads oversee. I've said that before. And I bring this topic to the agenda and to the town council meeting because it specifically keeps landing here. It comes to us all the time. And I'm sure every department head has probably already heard about this. I'm sure the mayor's office has heard about this, we've all gotten photos. And so I'm going to bring it back here, right? It keeps coming here, so let's talk about it here. So I figure let's do that. Some history, if you don't recall, or if you're not sure of the origins of these things. But the funding for these two basketball courts began in 2223, when I was not on the council. Uh, it was originally comes, it came from an initial $200,000. That was the cap and non-recurring, that was, so that's the electric money, basically, that we're using to build these basketball courts. And then it was amended to include an additional $160,000 from the CNR reserves in May of '23. The work began in '23 and was mostly completed in '24. For five months, beginning in June of '24, we were being forwarded pictures of issues that were being found on the tennis courts and the basketball courts. The topic of these basketball courts has come to the council on multiple occasions from people seeking benches that were later to be added, which was a nice amenity, to those that have had concerns with the end product. And I'm certain that other departments have been contacted and asked for various information about the process of design and the oversight of the projects and the sign-off process on the finished work. The overall cost of the courts was $326,000. And we just talked about $120,000 for homeless shelters. So we spent 330, now granted, these are 20-year warranted basketball courts, but we spent 330 million, or 330,000, not to get ahead of myself, on basketball courts. And it sounds like a lot of money, but you know what, it is. And that being said, it appears to, what these two basketball courts cost, soup to nuts, includes the demolition of the existing court, the removal of the debris, replace the court, finish the court, and so on. It's a lot of money, but it was a lot of work. So I'm not suggesting that we overpaid for something because I already said I'm not more knowledgeable than a department head. So, I had the opportunity to go in late September with, uh, Mr. Jason Michael. And he walked me through the issues that he had found with both the court on Henry Street and the court on Wall Street. And so then on Sunday this past week, I took my dad and we went back to the park and we walked and looked through it again. And we also took a ride to Pregman Park because it has a similar, uh, post-tension concrete court, um, that I was told could provide an example of a, 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 a better-looking product, a superior product, if you will. And I'll admit, in some of the instances where there were cracks that Mr. Michael showed me, I was not able to find them again later on because I think the weather had something to do with the cracks appearing. But, and that's just for transparency's sake. But a concern, and there was also, he also expressed a concern about the fence. And I'm just, I, I had a list of things. There was, there's a 10-foot fence that's around the basketball court on Wall Street. And he was concerned there was a middle bar missing. There does not appear to require a middle bar, I looked it up, okay? So I'm just, again, I'm going through the list of things that he was pointing out. Um, there's other issues that remain that are very clear, though. Primarily, my concern, and again, just looking at the courts from a distance, they're very nice. They're, you know, they look nice, they look new. I've seen people use them, I'm not denying any of those things. But when you look at them closely and you start to inspect them, one concern that I had was safety. For one, both of those basketball courts are not lined properly. There is no out-of-bounds line on either of them. Now, why does that matter? Well, if you've ever played basketball or were taught to dribble a basketball, you're taught to look forward while you dribble the ball and monitor the space in front of you. As you approach a basket, you would look for an end line to make sure that you don't go out of bounds. There is no end line. It just, you hit the concrete apron. And those concrete aprons themselves are heaved in places, so if you were to jump and land, you could roll your ankle, which I've done. And more importantly, the areas that are cracked look like they're getting worse. So around the edges of these concrete aprons, the court itself sits and on the edges of the court, the, the surface is crumbling off down into the gap between the apron and the court. So the, the tops of them are already starting to crack apart. And unlike Pregman, there's no padding on the posts that hold the basketball hoops. So on these same courts that I told you at one doesn't have out-of-bounds lines, the one on Wall Street does. The Henry Street one in particular, the one that's in Doolittle Park proper, has no out-of-bounds lines. The three-point line ends on one, it like ends in the sides. Like, when these courts were built, if you go to any basketball court when they build it, they will retrofit the outline of a court. They didn't do this in either case. They just built, they just lined them as if there was an imaginary space around that wasn't there anymore and they just stopped the lines. Like, again, we paid $160,000 for one court, we paid $200,000, I'm sorry, we paid $126, or $116,000 for one and $200 and change for another. These are basketball courts. And I'm not trying to discredit like why we chose them, I know why we chose them. I, and I, and I trust in Director Michael's decision to go with a 20-year warranty on a court and a 10-year warranty on the surface and all of the benefits that come from it and all that other stuff. I'm not denying it, but it's a lot of money and they don't look like they're holding up. And they're not even, they're barely, they're not even two years old. So the next issue is just with the surface and the aesthetics, okay? I mentioned the surface cracks on the edges, I mentioned the cracks that Mr. Michael showed to me, which I saw, but I wasn't able to find them again. But also the fact that there's no semblance of a modified full basketball court on these courts. From the warranty, we have 10 years on the surface to address. The documents that the product make mention that there should be no equipments, equipment used on them, bikes, skateboards, et cetera. There's only one posted sign, it's on the Henry Street court, there's not one posted on the Wall Street court. There are bike marks all over both of these courts. There's an ATV-sized tire mark by the one that's down on Wall Street. So in addition to these things falling apart, there's people doing stuff on them that they shouldn't be doing and there's not even a sign that tells you not to do it on one of them. At bare minimum, the lines on the court should reflect a modified basketball court that can be played on, especially at such a cost. And I, and I keep pointing to the lines because it's a basketball court. Like, if you play basketball, there's out-of-bounds, there's all kinds of, there's, it, it's not, it's not a functioning basketball court. The third issue is with the overall cracking, the aging of the aprons. The aprons that surround these, that hold the post-tension, post-tension concrete courts inside, the one on Henry Street is cracking in multiple areas and it looks like they went back and tried to fix it with like, like an expansion, a expansion kind of like, you know, filler that's since evaporated or isn't there anymore and they're cracking wider. I did some homework on what kind of cracks you could see in post-tension concrete surfaces, especially within a year of them being installed. And they're usually minor, about an eighth of an inch, and they tend to move and shift with the weather. Something may be similar to what Mr. Michael showed me. However, the cracks in the apron don't do that. Some of the cracks in the apron are as far as a quarter inch or a half inch thick. And then if you go down alongside these aprons, there's gaps of an inch in certain places. So water can get down in, dirt can get down in. The water is pooling up on the surface of these things and it's bird bathing and it's creating like a silt that stays there that rots the, the surface of the court. The purpose of these aprons is supposed to drain the water off, they're not draining the water off. Expansion joint compound didn't work and so while the Henry Street court is far worse, there's issues on the Wall Street, the edges of the court meet the apron that are uneven and appear to me not holding up. The issue should be looked into to determine if there are deeper structural concerns. The open edges in parts allow for water to fully enter under, between the apron and the court and I would imagine that this is less than desirable, especially as these courts are not very old. If we were to ask that these courts be reinstalled, the warranty, we could if we wanted to. If we could find that there are reason to, we have, we have a 20-year warranty, we can ask that the entire thing be redone. So lastly, and this is the last part, and then I'll let anyone else who wants to speak. And I would have asked questions if somebody came. But lastly, neither the Henry Street basketball court nor the brand-new tennis court have clear ADA compliant entry points to these things. Now, these aren't elements of design and these aren't elements with anything else, but if we're having a larger discussion about the park as a whole, anybody who goes to Doolittle Park should be able to access every single piece of equipment that's there. The tennis court and the other basketball court included. You cannot get to them if you're in a wheelchair. The, the bib to get into the tennis court, where there is a paved one, is cracked and broken, you couldn't get up it if you had any kind of, if you needed assistance getting in. And on the other side, it's a pure grass walk-up with a, with a, with a, with a bluestone kind of, you know, you know, like draining on the outside, so you can't even get into them. And I also make mention that, you know, these, these, the courts that I went to, including Pregman, had bike marks all over it. And, and so while we're having a, if we're having a discussion or if we're going to do anything about this stuff or, or what, it also begs the question of something that we had talked about last September with something like a skate park or something else that people can go and do. Because clearly when people aren't playing basketball on these courts, they're using them for other purposes and we need to find other avenues for people to do this stuff. So, anyway, thank you for letting me put this on the agenda. Thank you for letting me talk this through. This is, you know, sort of like where I was going with this and why I wanted to talk about it. I wanted to bring it up here, talk about it here, let's talk about it here and then maybe, you know, at a certain point, we won't have to talk about it anymore. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Counselor Carver?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I, I guess I just had a question, I don't know if it's to you, Janice, but Counselor Reynolds did a, did a thorough job explaining some of the issues out there, the cracks. What bothers me is the, you know, they're not properly lined as, you know, as basketball courts should. And, and we spent so much money on these, they should be perfect. So I don't know what type of recourse we have to make sure that they are the state-of-the-art basketball courts in mint condition that we had hoped for when they're not.
Well, they have to be in compliance with the bid specs, so whether that's state-of-the-art or not, I don't know. I don't know how the bid specs, what they, I can't interpret those. But I haven't heard from staff that they have issues with the work. So it's not something that I've looked into because they're not coming to me telling me they need to look into that. But, I mean, it has to be compliant with the, with the bid specs is what you're looking for. And, you know...
And they, and they say that they are.
They haven't brought any problems. I mean, they haven't, I haven't been involved in any discussions, so.
Okay.
So, J- Janice, if there was a legitimate concern with this, would there be a situation where we would hire like an outside engineer or something to look at it and look at the bid specs and determine if it was built appropriate? Like, I'm trying to see what, what would the, the natural next step be if the, if the council believes there's a legitimate issue, say, and the staff is unsure? Because like, looking through the bid specs, they're, between the bid specs and the warranty, there's like a lot of documentation, right? And so...
Well, if the staff is not telling us that, I mean, I, can you hire an independent expert? I, I suppose you can. I mean, you're gonna have to pay for it, but I don't know, you know, I mean, I, if you're not hearing it from those who are involved in it, I mean, you went through quite a list. I don't know if the list of things that you were talking about have been submitted to the departments that are involved in it for their review and comment, but, you know, from my perspective, there's, I mean, they're telling me that it's okay, I don't know.
If I may?
Please.
So we had an issue with the surface of both of those basketball courts at Doolittle and we made a warranty claim and the, the contractor came and replaced the surface without us having to employ an expert. So I think, I think if we start to make a warranty claim and there's resistance, then we have to look at whether or not we need to hire somebody to support our claim.
Okay, so the, the next step then, to your point then would be for Counselor Reynolds to list his, his concerns and then give them to the department head to, to review. And that would be, the department head would be Parks and Racker Public Works?
You could forward them to my office and I'll distribute them.
Perfect. Any other questions on this one? Members of the public? Mr. Carver?
Bill coming from Broadview Drive. First off, thank you for putting this on there. I know it's hard. I asked another person that led me to believe was going to be on here. A couple of things that if, if I was up there, I'd be focusing on is, and you guys all saw the specifications document, which I believe Janice actually wrote or, or, or saw, excuse me.
I did not write it and I, I have not read it. I have not been involved in it. So why would I write the bid specs for a basketball court?
The contract agreement?
I'd have to take a look at it, I don't know if, if my office was involved or not.
I, I believe the office was involved with the contract agreement, but most importantly, it's, it completely states that the town engineer inspects it. That's the final end. That's, in, in, the mayor stated at the last meeting that no one from the engineering department inspected it. So you, you, and I'm only going to shift to go down to Community Lake briefly because no inspections were done. I'll give you all the pictures you want now that you have it on the agenda. Matter of fact, what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna give you one of the pictures right now where it's gonna show you that whole entire slab blew out of the ground, five inches. So the question then is, what caused it? It's nice that they repainted it, but I asked at that last meeting, what caused it? What's the root cause? Listen, we're not experts, I don't know, but the people that did the work should be able to come back and say, well, this is what failed. We don't have that, we just gotta repaint. It's the same thing with your hallway, right? That failed, but we repainted it. Repainting doesn't solve the problem. So I'll give this, because I did promise Chairman Maron, I'll give you the picture of the blowout. Also, I asked about encapsulated tendons. We still don't know, have that answer. So fast forward to Community Lake, I have it, I, I have it on tape where the guy says, the concrete failed. I have pictures of tendons that are exposed. All these things should have been at least identified by the town engineer. And if it was me, and I still say this, the way the contract is written, whoever wrote it, the, the agreement, if there's any doubt, even if there's a clause there, which I'm grateful, it's almost like a saving clause, it says, even if the town engineer missed something or it's brought up after the fact, the contractor is still responsible. So, like, like Counselor Reynolds had, had stated, it looks good. It's far from goo, good from far, but far from good. And, and there's, there's, there's so many issues. The, the first picture I'm gonna give you is the five-inch blowout. Then I'm gonna give you is, I'm gonna give you pictures of the tendons that were at Community Lake. They're sliced wide open like Freddy Krueger went down there with a razor knife. And these are all things that cause gross failures in it. Then they have another thing called honeycombing, okay? Honeycombing is, is when your concrete isn't vibrated properly and then you have big pockets of air. This, this picture is exactly that, okay? I'll, I'll, I'll give you guys this too. And what happens is, when you go to, in my opinion, when you go to put the, the, the concrete in, into the tension, it, it's gonna, it's gonna crumble. So all these things based upon the post-tension concrete specifications are all supposed to be picked up by the town engineer. The town engineer should have shut the job down. The, the town engineer, based upon the contract, it says, that's the only department that inspects. So, so based upon what I saw, including the fact that the, the tendons should have never even been allowed to go forward with it. And when I did meet the mayor down in, in June 23rd, I brought this up to him and he's like, well, do you have it in writing? I'm like, no, I'm supposed to have it tomorrow. I'm still waiting, I have nothing. All these things should have been given to the, to, to, to the town engineer, you guys should have had it, some of us should have had it. We're talking $800,000 worth of, worth of work and if it was one of my projects, I would be insisting that it's done. They don't even have the results of the, of, of the concrete. And the interesting thing is, and I'm happy to provide you the video, what happens is, when they came in and tested the concrete, they, they tested it every 10th truck, which is every 100 yards. So the first test, which is all in video, the, the guy tells the contractor that it failed. That's the first truck out of nine, nine already dumped it. The 10th one fails. And he's, he says, look, I just can only make a recommendation and I told them to reject it. It's all I can do. And they said, they still used it. Now you go back a week later, there's a crack there from here to the town clerk. There's not one, there's several. And the same thing happened down at Doolittle. As, as, as Counselor Reynolds said, yeah, you don't see it now because it, you don't have a frost. But you can go down to Do, excuse me, Community Lake and you can see them. I'm sure you saw them. So what do they do? They just paint over something. And, and, and to give you a little history of this, I reached out to the Smithfield, Rhode Island, because they had problems with classic turf. And, and the town manager gave me all the, all the information. He, he, he says, I wish I'd known because I would have told you to stay away from them as much as they possibly can. They went after their bond and so forth. So, so when I started asking for all this information that the, that the engineer should have had, it, it, it just concerned me because when I went down there, they had a subcontractor doing work. That's in violation of the terms of the contract. It says, nobody can, can subcontract any of the work. And also classic turf, in my opinion, had a lawsuit filed against them for, for labor and not paying the proper labor. So I asked for the copy of the records, the contractor that was doing the work down there, there, there's, there's no paperwork, that guy wasn't even there doing anything. So there's a long history of potential problems, in my opinion. As far, as far as your, your chain link fence goes, yes. The one down at, at Community Lake is supposed to have that be, that, that bar that goes in between. As far as paint goes, it's supposed to be four inches, it's not. I mean, there's a, like I said, there's a whole laundry list of them. I mean, it, I can give you more and more stuff here, but when you see this stuff, if it was your house, would you be treating it the same way as my $800,000? I would hope, I would hope that it would be the same. So I'll, I'll give you the pictures.
Thank you very much. When you came to the last meeting, I said, if you left the photos, I'd be happy to look into it and now you can find out if I'm a man of my word.
Here's, here's the concrete. They're born on the ground. Here's the slices. I mean, I've got them.
That's good sampling. Thank you. Anyone else on this topic? Mr. Massimino?
Real quick, before I dive into the courts, I want to point the council to the procedures, number four. With the exception of the consent agenda, public input on individual agenda items will be received during the discussions of the specific items during the member, members of the council have an opportunity to review and discuss the items. Individuals wishing to speak, individual agenda items will be required to address the council and their questions and comments through the chair. Limit him or her to three minutes. So I have no idea why you decided to say...
Do you have any comments on this item?
Yep, I just want to get that on the record. Because you decided to take your own, you know, authority, which you don't have over that, and decide to overrule our rules so I couldn't speak.
You have the floor.
So, so before we go on, I'll give the opportunity to make a public apology. If you choose not to, that's fine and I'll take it up with FOIA.
So you're welcome to take it up with FOIA, those are the council rules. That's not a FOIA matter, it's the council rules, right?
Yeah, no, no, but it's FOIA because you're limiting speech.
We've discussed before, hang on, hang on.
Yep.
You said you were gonna give me an opportunity to talk, right?
Sure, go ahead.
So when we discussed this before, there, there is no guarantee that the public gets to talk on any item in a council meeting, right? So it's dictated by the council rules exclusively, which are at the discretion of the chair. So if you want to take it up with FOIA, take it up with FOIA.
So you picked and chose that time not to let people spike.
No, no, I'm saying that's an internal council matter.
Yep.
The public gets no input into the minutes, which is what sort of let us down this path, right?
No, our rules state the public should be allowed to speak on any agenda matter. That's what it states.
Question made and answered. Do you have any, any?
Yes.
Input on this topic?
So like I was saying, um, last week, uh, two, sorry, two weeks ago, the main issue with, we have with the courts is that the, at the end of the day, this isn't even a poor job by the contractor, which it is, it's more than that. We have a poor job from our administration, okay? We have a law department that refuses to look out for our best interest as citizens. We have a mayor who refuses to listen to reason. We sat with this man and explained to him everything we just said and he said it's fine, it's perfect. We just had a councilman go down there and say, no, it's not. So I'm a little confused because in June, I had Kenny Michaels tell me in my face, it's perfect, it's mint, no issues. Counselor Reynolds thankfully looked into it, says not. Doesn't jive. And more importantly, which I don't understand is, we have hierarchy in the town protecting outside contractors that are doing shabby work. That doesn't make sense. And when you take it a step further and you look at Community Lake, same deal. In the contract, it states that we are supposed to have a town engineer there inspecting the work. This man sat here two weeks ago and told you no one did it. And we're sitting here, we're talking about the red herring. Let's talk about the 3,000-pound elephant in the room. Where is the transparency? Where's the accountability? Why wasn't the town engineer reprimanded? Why wasn't this man spoken to and said, hey, at the end of the day, why didn't you tell your engineer to look at it? Why is that okay? That's the main question.
Thank you. Anyone else on this topic? All right, seeing nothing else, this meeting is adjourned.